Good evening, everyone. This is Lori Charlton. It is May 5th, 2022. I want to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Board of Finance. I will call the meeting to order and ask that we all stand while our colleague, Mr. Testani, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, everyone, and welcome. It is so nice to be back in person with all of you. And note for the public, those of you who may have joined via WebEx, there will be no live public comment this evening until called for the chair. Live public comment pertinent to Agenda Items 4 through 14 is welcome and will be called for after the discussion on each item is heard. We would appreciate it if comments are limited to no more than two minutes per individual. The public is also encouraged to send comments in writing before the meeting to the following email, BOF@fairfieldct.org. If you do so, please remember to include your name and address for the record. Okay. We are going to move on to Item 3, To Hear, Consider, and Act Upon the Suspense List for the Tax Collector. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Matola. Thank you. And we have, the backup for this item is, begins on Page 1 in the posted backup. And we have Mr. Dave Kloszuski here, our tax collector, to present to us. So I'll turn it over to him.
Yes, good evening, Chairwoman Charlton and other distinguished members of the Finance Board. I respectfully, I respectfully am requesting that the Board of Finance approve the transfer of tax accounts amounting to $114,459.69 to the suspense tax book. My office has spent a considerable amount of time researching these accounts to be put on suspense in order to have an accurate file of collectible accounts. I believe that these accounts are to be uncollectible and have not been paid, to the best of my knowledge. And, but I want to also remind you that even though I do not anticipate collecting these accounts for a numerous, numerous amount of reasons, other, you know, whether it's individual has passed away, business has moved out of town, business has gone out of business, and we've exhausted all of our resources in terms of trying to collect. Even though that is the case, legally, these are still collectible and we would still collect the funds if the opportunity were to arise. Legally, they do remain collectible for a period of 15 years, even though we're going to suspend them and we do not anticipate collecting them.
Okay, thank you very much. Questions from the board? Mr. Testani?
Thanks, Ben, sure. Hey, Dave, how are you tonight?
Good, how are you?
Good, good. The only question I have, I'm just really more curious than anything else. What happened in 2015? Is it an anomaly? Is it, I'm just trying to, so...
Yeah, oh, yeah, I can explain that. So last year, it would have been the entire 2014 motor vehicle grand list. What we do is, we, we give these motor vehicles to a collection agency, but not until about three or four years after it's delinquent, because the idea being that within a two-year time period, most of these motor, the majority of our motor vehicle grand list gets paid because individuals have to register a vehicle with the state. The state law says you can't register if you have a delinquent motor vehicle. So once we've passed that two- to three-year threshold of registration, then we give it to our collection agency to attempt to find the individual. Once that step is exhausted, then four, five, six years later, we suspend it because the assumption is that every level of attempts to collect it has failed. So we don't anticipate collecting it any longer.
And the fees that we pay to the collection agency, where are those? Are those part of your budget? I'm just trying to...
We do not pay any fees at all to the collection agency per state law. You know, whether it's Fairfield or any town in the state, what happens is they, they charge a 15%, a 15% collection fee. That gets paid to, that gets paid by the taxpayer, not, not the...
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani. Other questions from the board? Oh, Ms. Leclerc.
Just one quick question. How does the total, this $114,000, compare to prior years? Is it in the same range or higher?
Yes, actually, I don't have the, the exact number off the top of my head, but I believe last year it was slightly more, like maybe around $120,000 to $118,000. But it's typically around this number each year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Other questions?
I have an easy one.
Mr. Stark?
I accumulate knowledge by not pretending to know things that I don't know. And so I was just curious, and maybe someone here in the committee can answer. Why, why do, why does putting this in suspense require our approval? Is that, is that in the charter or, anyone know?
I believe it's actually state statute. As you know, as many of you most know, the collection of property taxes, I'm governed by state statute where every town, where, you know, we pretty much have to abide by the state law when it comes to collecting taxes. And I do know that in the statutes, it says that I have to report or place taxes onto the suspense list at least once a year. So I don't know if it's just that, I'm not sure why it's the Board of Finance that has to approve it, but I do know that it is something that I have to present at least once a year per state statute.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Other questions? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the suspense list? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Stark. All in favor? I, it is unanimous, 8-0. Mr. Walsh is not present. Thank you, Mr. Kloszuski. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
All right. We will move on to Item 4, To Hear, Consider, and Approve a Recommendation from the Board of Selectmen to Transfer Not More Than $325,000 From the WPCA Fund Balance For the Proposed Carriage Line, Carriage Drive Sewer Line Extension Process Project Pursuant to Connecticut General Statute 7-253 In the Agreement with Participating Homeowners. The backup for this item is posted and it is on Page 14 for everyone's reference. Do I have a motion to put this item before us? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Curly. All right, this item is before us. I'm not, is, do we have Mr. Hurley? With us here? I know that he was tentative.
This is, this is Town Attorney Jim Baldwin, and I'm able to speak to this as best I can.
Thank you, Mr. Baldwin.
Sure. So this is the first time in probably well over a decade since the town has entertained a request of homeowners on a street to have a new sewer line put in to their neighborhood. And it's taken some doings, but we've come up with a process and procedure to make that happen. WPCA has come up with a policy requiring 75% of the people on the street to sign documents committing themselves to such a project, which has happened, in this case, at Carriage Drive. The property owners are very eager to have the sewer line put in, and part of that agreement includes the requirement that they pay for the upfront engineering costs associated with, with putting the line in by a certified firm, which has already happened. And then it goes to the, the boards for approval. There is no town bonding in this procedure, unlike the other WPCA projects, which are before you tonight. This is strictly a matter of the WPCA covering half the cost with the homeowners covering the other half of the cost, and that half will be amortized over the next 20 years. And they will, they will be paying their usage fees accordingly. So that's, that's what's before you. The, the cost, as I understand, is based on those estimates, and there is contingency built in. And that's why I said not more than figure. It should not be quite that much, but that's, that's the amount that you have for the 325 maximum.
All right, thank you for that, Mr. Baldwin. Anything else? Okay, questions from the board then? Mr. Matola?
Thank you. Excuse my back, Jim. I don't know how you're viewing me. Is the, the one-half cost from the WPCA, one-half cost for the homeowners, is that just something that was negotiated between the entities? If you know, or is that like just a state statute-type requirement? How did that come about?
I believe that was negotiated between the entities, and actually, it's pursuant to a policy that was adopted by the WPCA.
Okay, thank you. And just, where is Carriage Drive again? Why, I'm not picturing it.
It's up by Mine Hill, I believe.
Okay.
Mill Hill, rather, near Mill Hill School.
Okay. And they're all on sewers up there? Or not sewers, on, on septic systems now?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Other questions from the board? Ms. Marmian?
Thank you. Mr. Baldwin, does this $4,250 connection fee, is that considered revenue to the town then?
I, I believe in the sense that it's revenue to the WPCA account. It goes into their account. I don't, I'm, I'm not an accountant, so I can't tell you how that's actually put in the books, but it goes to the WPCA's dedicated account, as I understand it.
And that includes the, the half, the, the, the fee paid over 20 years that also goes to the WPCA?
That is correct. And, and the $4,200 hookup fee is in addition to the 50% cost borne by the homeowners.
Sorry, what is that cost to the homeowners?
The, the hookup fee that you cited, the, was it $4,200, $4,250 connection fee hookup?
That is what's paid over? I'm confused. That's what's paid over, that's not what's paid over 20 years?
That is paid in addition to the 50% of the cost for the installation of the sewer line on the street.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. What's the cost of the hookup sewer connection on the street?
Once the line is in, they don't get connected until they pay that $4,250 fee.
So if I'm one of the homeowners, homeowners participating in this and I sell my house, does that cost translate over to the new owner? Are they then responsible for it?
It does. There's a statutory lien form or tax form that goes on to the land records, and, and they will be assessed on a regular basis, like anyone else who's hooked up to the system. And you'll receive a bill, but it is on the land records.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Other questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve this item? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Testani. All in favor? I, okay, it is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you very much, Mr. Baldwin.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Okay, we are going to move on. I was told, after the agenda was posted, that Items 5 and 6 on the agenda, which are both related to the WPCA, are not actually ready. For us, the WPCA Board needs to consider these items further. So I would actually like to make a motion to postpone these items until such time that the, it's appropriate for them to be brought back before us after they have been voted on by the WPCA. So Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Testani. We'll postpone these to a future date. All in favor? I, it is unanimous, 9-0. Thank you. All right, so we are going to move on to Item 7. But before we do this, we have a number, you'll see that we have a number of bonding resolutions on here. So within the backup, just for the board's reference and so that everyone can, can see the sum total of what we are, what's being put before us for approval this evening, there is actually a capital projects list that you can refer to. And it begins on Page 16 of the posted backup. That is a capital project summary. It's four or five pages, and it includes a summary of dollars and then a listing of projects that were either approved this year or will be approved this evening or, or later in the year. So a number of the projects that we will approve tonight are part of this. So I just want to give Mr. Schmidt an opportunity to walk through a couple of these pages before we move on to the actual item. Mr. Schmidt, can you do that?
Yep, I'd be happy to. I, I put this up on the screen and it's being shared so that everybody who is not here can also look at this. So the, as the Chairwoman mentioned, this is, I would call it an overview of, and some context for what's on the agenda tonight. And also kind of putting, putting all of these projects into the context of what we've talked about for the, you know, the capacity analysis of the town's ability and capacity to, to borrow money. And so if you look at the, take a look at the screen, this first section here, what we're showing here is the projected cash requirements. So this is still kind of up in the air. It's not, it's not exactly precise, and we become more precise when we, when we talk to our financial advisors and when we size the bond issuance. In particular, as was mentioned, there were two items that were recently taking, taken off of this, out of this packet, being the WPCA items. There was one that was removed in the Board of Selectmen, and there was another one that was obviously removed tonight. So the amounts are, are, would be approximately $4 million less than the amounts that you see here. So looking at this, Page 16, the, the top portion there, Exhibit 1. So what, what is on the agenda for tonight are the proposed, that first line proposed, 22, 23 projects. And the total amount, and I'll, I want to emphasize here that these are, again, cat, these would be your potential cash flow needs, not necessarily what you're gonna approve to and commit to borrowing. And we'll get into that in, in a little bit and as we go through each of the, each of the items here. The second one, the second exhibit that's in there is the approved nonrecurring from 22, 23. You've, you've, you've approved that list. All the boards have approved that list. We also have some remaining approved from, from the 21, 22 year, both nonrecurring and capital items. And so those are the last two on there. And the reason that they're on there is because they have been, they've been authorized by all the boards, but we haven't issued bonds for those yet. And so the anticipation is that either, you know, within the last, I'll say, nine months or so, they have been done or they're going to be done since they were first approved. The second section there is just a breakdown by, because we have, we've spoken about capacity in terms of, you know, how much each of the entities would get, and the entities being the town, Board of Education, and the WPCA. Obviously, the WPCA, 4.5 million goes away because those projects were removed. So what you're left with is an amount of about 17, about $18 million. And then, again, the, the, what I will call, I hesitate to call them targets, but that's how we're labeling them, the target allocations. So the, the total, the, the total amount that, in working with our, our financial advisor, that we've determined we have the capacity to bond for in years, about $37.5 million. And so what we've done is tried to, and I'm gonna be careful here, too. These are, these are annual averages. And as you know, bonding can fluctuate significantly from one year to next. So these are, these are annual averages of the amount that, that would be quote-unquote allocated to each of the entities as target amounts. And so, you know, if you compare this list at the bottom to the one above it, you can see that they're, they're not lining up with the way, with the averages that are the targets. Over time, the goal will be, and we'll talk about, more about this during the fall when we do the, the full, the, the Capital Working Group gets together and, and starts to go through the five-year plan, the complete five-year plan, because the, the goal of this meeting was just to do a one-year, a one-year plan. And so that's what, that's what we're doing here. But as we go through and in, in the fall, come up with that five-year plan, what we hope to do is to take a look at all the town projects, all the Board of Ed projects, WPCA projects, and, you know, plan those out and schedule those out so that they, you know, over a period of time, they will at least come close to meeting what these targets are. And then, so the next page, what you see here... Okay, so the, the top portion of this page, this gives an overview of what the projects are that, that are on the agenda to be approved, minus the two WPCA projects and the Fitz HVAC project, which will, my understanding, will be put on to the, into the quarterly meeting agenda. It's, that one's already been approved by the Board of Selectmen. So these are the, the top section are the ones that we are trying to get approved fairly quickly tonight so that they can go through, make it through all the boards by the end of May. And then, assuming that they are, you know, as we look at these over, over the next two months and talk to the department heads, the goal is to determine that or whether they're ready, ready to go over the next year and can be placed on our June bond issuance. So that's, that's the, that would be the goal of the, this top section there.
Do you want to take questions now, Mr. Schmidt?
I can take them now.
Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Schmidt, the spreadsheet that's up there right now, is that on the backup? I'm not seeing it.
Yes, it is. It starts on Page 16, Mr. Walsh, of the, on the online backup, yes.
Okay. But if I'm on this back... Yeah, I'm sorry. The hard copy that you have is more limited than what's in the backup online, so, right. Was there another question?
Mr. DeWitt, did you have a question?
Thank you. I guess I don't need to say my name for on camera, all right? So understand the three approved, the three approves of the four. But in this proposed list, are all these, did all of these projects make it on the list because we think they're ready to go in the June timeframe? Because, because again, the waterfall that we looked at in, whenever we looked at it, had a much larger number. So these are on this list based on priority and execution time. Is that correct?
That's correct. These are ones that we believe at this time that they're gonna be ready to go over the next, you know, 12 to 15 months. Yep.
And, and in keeping with the, your last slide, which says the annual, the average annual target allocation, we'll, we're, obviously, we're gonna try to hold our bonding every year to 37.5 million. So we'll keep track of these things and within, well, of course, this is the end of the fiscal year, right? So this is, you know, we'll be starting at zero here in a, in a month or two, right? Or a couple of months, right?
No, no, this is, this would actually be bonding for next year.
That's correct. Oh, so, okay. Yeah. So this is 22, 23 fiscal year bonding? Oh, it's not this year fiscal year bonding?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. So this, so this is eating into the 37.5 million for next year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, because we, just to, because we, we bond basically at the beginning of the fiscal year. So, yeah. So what we approved during, during the fiscal year will go on to next year's bonding.
Right. I'm trying to read that.
So part of what we, so for example, Gould Manor that we, we approved in December, that will also be part of this July, along with this, that we approved this evening.
Got it.
Got it.
And just as a, just as a point, a reference point, we're nowhere near bonded 37.5 million in this fiscal year, right? Like, not even close to 37 million.
What we, so we, we issued already for, for this past fiscal year, and we did, it was 28 million in bonds and 13, almost 14 million in bands that we did. So it was, it was, you know, it wasn't too far off.
Not too far off. Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Ms. Marmian?
Thank you. I just want to go for, to, for authorization after June 1st, 2022. And you have Penfield Construction listed. And I know that's looking forward with an estimated total of 7 to 10 million. And I just, I, I, I want to understand how you came up with that. I haven't seen any, we don't really know what's going on with Penfield. It's, there's not a plan for it yet, and we don't truly know what we're gonna do there. So how are we, what are we basing this on? Is there new information from the state? Or is there progress that's been made by the administration in terms of laying out plans?
So based on conversations with consultants and FEMA, this is an estimate that, the best guess at this point that we've come up with, there are obviously going to be different options for, for construction and how it's done. And so we don't know what the, what those, which one of those options we're gonna pursue. And so that's why there's a, a range in the cost here. Furthermore, I would say that with this amount, because we don't know, we haven't, we're not including this as something that's going to be issued in June. And so as we get more information, you know, hopefully, we'll be able to nail down a, you know, get a, a better sense of what the cost is gonna be and, and also what the, what the approach is gonna be to the construction of the project. But right now, you know, we don't, we don't have anything that's, that's scheduled to be, to be bonded for over the next 12 months. It would be on next year's, potentially on next year's bond issuance.
That's what I understood. I mean, I'm just looking forward and wondering time, time-wise, when we might see something, just an updated plan or options, et cetera, from the administration, so that we have a better... I, I get a lot of questions about what's going on with Penfield, and it is... So I'm just wondering when we might see something in terms of options.
Yep, and that's a great question. And I know that the First Selectwoman is also concerned about that. And, you know, there's not gonna be, I don't believe that there's gonna be a decision about the construction until there's feedback from the public as well to, you know, to get a sense of where they stand on what should be done with the, with the building.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Any other questions on the schedule before we move on to the bond authorizations? Mr. Walsh?
So how much, you, I know you have to work with the financial advisors you talked about, but out of the list of projects that are approved here, how much you... But out of the list of projects that are approved here, how much are you approximately planning before you talk to the financial advisor about whether we have cash or other things? All of it? And are we going to put, take all of it pretty much for every one of these projects and put the money in the bank and then use it throughout the year?
So we, right, so the, you know, if you go back to that, the first page that we started talking about, that, that section on the top there, that's on your screen, of about thirty-seven million dollars, potentially, that's what could get bonded over the next, over the next year or so. Because within here are the, the proposals that, that you're going to be voting on tonight. And in addition to that, as I mentioned, you have things that have happened in the past that have been approved and have been authorized, but we haven't issued for yet. So a lot of, a lot of those projects we will issue for because they've either been done or we anticipate that they're going to be done over the next twelve months. You know, Caitlin, every year, goes out to the departments and before we issue and, and gets their feedback so that we have a better projection of what's actually going to be done. And we're, you know, the, the only reason that we're, I'll say, anywhere near, close to being able to project a dollar amount this year is because we're a little bit delayed in the process. You know, because we're, we're about two months away now, so we have a better sense of what's going to get done over the next year. But typically, you know, these, these projects are going to, you know, when the, the working group meets in the fall, we're going to be, we'll be further away, further removed from when we issue bonds next year. And so these, these projections are not going to be nearly as, as close. And the same thing with the authorization of those projects because they will probably happen in, in a more, what, what you're used to in a, on a basis that's more, you know, we'll do one here, we'll do two here, or three here, not coming to you in, in a big chunk like this.
Kind of a follow-up to that? Thank you. To follow it up, so example, let me just give you an example, not to speak about it because I know we'll get to it, is number twelve. Twenty-two million, seven hundred and one thousand, four forty-three. Are you going to be seeking all those funds in this coming bond?
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
So the amount, the amount for that will be the one point one, like, one point one five three million dollars.
Right. The one-one, the one million, one sixteen, three twenty, or is it the amount in the column over there?
That, that's the grant amount.
The grant amount is the million dollars that from the ARPA money.
That's correct.
Plus the hundred and sixteen thousand, three twenty from the other grant that they got.
Yeah, from their ArtBesser money.
That's the ArtBesser money, right, Andrew?
Yeah, yeah.
Is, are you going to be bonding for other amounts in addition to that?
For this particular project?
Yes.
No.
Okay, that'll be the only.
Issuing bonds? No.
Okay.
We won't be issued, this year, we won't be issuing bonds. However, the item that will be on the agenda tonight would essentially commit you to the twenty-two point seven million. As far as when those bonds are issued, it's going to be that, that, I'll say, small amount tonight of one point one five three million. And then the rest will be issued probably over the, the two years following that.
Okay. I don't want to get too deep on twelve, so I'll reserve some questions for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other questions on this? Mr. Testani?
Yeah, thanks, Jared. I, I actually have more of a general question. Sort of, we touched on Penfield, or you did a little bit. I'm just curious, you mentioned consultants, right, when you were talking about Penfield? Is it, are they the same consultants that we're using for the rest of the fill pile? Costs potentials, or is it, are they unique to Penfield? I'm just trying to understand, is there a separate fee involved for that, that it's costing the town? Or is that part of something that's already been allocated? I'm just trying to get a little more background on that.
I don't know the answer to that question, which, whether or not it's the same ones that are doing the fill pile. I'm not sure if there's anybody else on here who could answer that question. Somebody might be able to give some more information there.
Jared?
I can't answer that.
Jared?
Yes, is that Buck?
Madam Chair, yeah.
Yes, Mr. Marsilio. Go ahead. Thank you.
So there's two parts to Penfield. There's the elevation of the building is one issue. And then there's the unsuitable material beneath the building, which is another issue. The unsuitable material beneath the building, the consultant for the fill pile is the same consultant that is developing the remediation program to be sent to DEEP and EPA for their approval. The building itself, we have, we have had consultants, architects and soil engineers to examine the elevations, come up with some suggestions. And on Monday at one o'clock, there'll be a meeting with FEMA and we'll be presenting them with a number of solutions. And FEMA will determine which solutions they're willing to accept for the foundation elevations on that building that we're offering. So it's moving along, albeit glacially. But we, we need approvals from one set of departments, state and local, and another department, FEMA, federal, to, in order to move that project forward. Does that answer your question? Yeah. Hey, hey, Buckey, this is Jack Testani. How are you, how are you doing? I'm doing all right. Just on the, on the overall cost, are they also advising you, not just in Penfield, but overall, in terms of the remediation on the rest of the fill pile? Is that, so you're saying moving along? I'm just trying to get an, an understanding of what kind of dollars we're, we're looking at, whether it be Penfield or the remediation of the fill pile in general, which, as we know, has already been in the multimillions. Yeah, so Penfield, for just beneath the building, we're a little uncertain about exactly what's beneath the parking lot. We don't want to tear that whole parking lot up, so that's, we've been doing some core boring there. But it's millions to remove the material beneath the building now. Not, not to get too deep into the weeds. In order to remove that material, there are various scenarios about the building that exists there and whether it has to be moved, whether it, or, or not. And there's costs associated with all of those scenarios. As far as the fill pile, that is a bigger cost problem. And I think you've seen those, those numbers and, and they're, they're in the millions again. And we're not sure just what's going to be accepted at this point. And, and just to follow up on that, when you, again, when you say millions, is it over ten million? Is there any estimates that you could perhaps forward to us? I, I wouldn't offer any estimates at this point, no, because, you know, there's been a big transition at DEEP and you, some of the people who worked on this project, you know, five or six years ago, they're no longer there. And the, and the new blood up there, they have some new notions. And our council is telling us that some, some of the requests might be unreasonable. So I, I don't want to throw out the tall numbers that they are asking for when, when I don't think that, that's going to happen. I don't want to, I don't want to have a read-my-lips moment where I put out a number and, and everyone rallies around that. So that's, that's yet to be born yet. And we're working on that also, so.
Can, can I just make a suggestion on this one? I think it, it's, we should probably pick a date to get an update for the board on this, Mr. Schmidt, to, to some of the points that have been made here. We don't have to act on any of these items tonight, obviously, on Penfield or anything else. There, I think they're here so that Mr. Schmidt presented them, so the board could get an understanding of the full plan for the year, some of which, to the extent we approve it tonight, will be in the bonding, some of which will come later. But I, I think it would be helpful, given the concerns and the questions, if we schedule sometime to, perhaps we could do it at the June meeting. But, you know, clearly, those are, so none of those are before us tonight, but it, it's helpful to have them on here more so that everyone kind of knows what's coming for the year. Okay. Anything else on these schedules, Mr. Schmidt? I, I think the key takeaway for the board here is that even if, and I'll call it best case, we're ready, fully ready to go with all of these items and they are all bonded because they're all ready to move. We are, including everything we act on tonight, we will be within the thirty-seven million that we've been talking about, so. Okay. Mr. Curley?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. A quick question, Jared. I, I just want to make sure I'm following the schedule and, and with respect to this schedule on the board, I understand the points about the totals, think some things we're not acting upon. I get it. We're really focused on the net costs. We're removing or excluding the WPCA projects from the list. But the shaded column to the far right, the future issuance, I, I think I follow where, where the previous conversation or questions were going. But for me, I think what's difficult about that last column is that it, it's, it's pretty ambiguous. And is there a chance next time we get this type of update to see that spread out over specific years? Or is that, or is it just out there in one column because there's just not enough detail available at this time?
So I can tell you with regard to the, the Board of Education HVAC, there is information in the backup separate from this chart that, that goes into that kind of detail. But as far as the, you know, any of these other things, these are probably, and I can speak, you know, Penfield, we've talked about, the Riverfield roof and the Sherman roof, I believe, would be probably in the, in the next year, in the following year, just to, and, and I, I understand what you're saying because this was, you know, what, we were doing a one-year plan. We hadn't, hadn't scoped everything out over the five-year period. But from here on out, as we proceed and do the full-blown plan, you'll see everything laid out. And we'll also, the, the goal is to put forth different schedules, one that'll have the a five-year schedule of when and how much is being approved for each project and then also show it on a, on a projected cash flow basis. And to have that scoped out as well. And then in addition to that, to show the specific sources, if there are grants related to any of these, and, and if there aren't, frankly, that we would show the, the sources of, of funding for each of the projects. So we'll have a much more in-depth and comprehensive package for you guys in the future.
That'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Curley. All right. Any other questions before we move on to item seven? Okay. Thank you, everyone. So with that, we're going to move on to item seven to hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled, "The Resolution Appropriating One Million Nine Hundred and Forty-nine Thousand Seven Hundred and Seventy-eight Dollars for the Costs of Townwide Facility Systems Upgrades and Authorizing the Issuance of Bonds to Finance Such Appropriation." Can I have a motion to put this item before us, Mr. Testani? Second, Mr. Curley. Okay, this item is before us and I believe we have Buildings Manager James Ryan, I hope. Sorry, your, your, our screen here is blocked a little bit, so I hope you're there. He's there. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. So actually, before you, before you get started, just a note for the board and for the public, the backup for this item is extensive. There is the report, the townwide audit, Building Audit Report from Silver Petricelli. So that begins on page twenty-one of the posted backup. And that goes all the way until the bond resolution for this item, which is on page four seven four, and the fourteen-point summary on page four seven seven. Okay, Mr. Ryan, do you want to take us through this one?
Sure. So it's James Ryan, Building Maintenance Manager, Department of Public Works. This request is a result of the townwide facility audit, as you stated, performed last year by Silver Petricelli and Associates. The audit provided a long-range capital plan that analyzed the current facilities' code compliance, accessibility, and ongoing, and future maintenance needs. This request would address the priority one, the most important items in the seventeen buildings that were pointed out in the Capital Need Assessment Report, summarized to the board, I believe, in February by Michelle Miller of Silver Petricelli. Some examples of the priority one items are like life safety, the fire alarm panel upgrades, electrical would be like emergency lighting improvements, accessibility would be like ADA compliance, some structural would be like seismic or wind resistance study. And then HVAC would be some air quality improvements. And then some of these items will involve engaging in an architect and engineering firm through a request for a proposal to design and prepare bid specifications. And that's pretty much all I got.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Ryan. Questions from the board? Mr. Curley?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair, and good evening, Mr. Ryan. Good to see you. I've got a few questions. I, I'm looking specifically at page three hundred and eighty of the Silver Petricelli report because that seems to give a pretty good, kind of, at least by facility, a list of the one point, yeah, actually, the page before that in the, in the book, yeah, because.
Okay, go ahead, Craig, with your question. I'll look for it.
Okay. So I, I guess my first question is more general while you're looking for the detail. I believe this report was generated, or at least the work that went into it, was last year. I know it was presented to this board, I believe, at the beginning of February. I guess my question is, given the inflation that we've recognized in very recent months, is there a concern that the dollar amounts that you're asking for are stale? And will this, will the actual cost be potentially greater than what, what you've asked for?
Good question, Craig. It's, it, it was only back in February, right, that we, this study was completed. Yeah, there are some concerns, but there's also, you know, some soft costs there as well that, you know, that they're, you know, are, are there, is there a contingency in this ask? Probably not, but, you know, you know, these, these estimates were done by Silver Petricelli. They're not here in the, in the room, but, you know, I would say that they were, they were, you know, a little escalated by them because of, you know, the times that we're in. I think they might have referred to that in their report as well, that, you know, that, you know, that there's the supply and demand issues and stuff like that.
Yep, understood. And, and that's fine. I didn't mean to press you on that. I was, I was really just concerned that perhaps the number was low. And if, if you had a similar concern, then perhaps the dollar amount should be greater. But the other question I had was, if, if I'm looking at the right schedule correctly, we've got seventeen different facilities that are on the list that make up the, the dollar amount request or included. Four of them are looking at just the category one stuff, which is the critical safety type issues. Four of them are for amounts that are less than ten thousand dollars. So I guess my question is, if they really are category one and safety issues, have these actually already been addressed or should they have been? And I'm looking specifically at forty-six hundred dollars for animal control, sixty-four hundred for the rec center, ninety-two hundred for Penfield, and twenty-five hundred for Independence Hall. Penfield's actually, I have a follow-up question on that, too, but we'll, we'll, I'll pause there.
Okay, so, so.
Okay, so, so Independence Hall, right, we'll, we'll, I'll just summarize that, the exterior emergency lighting that hasn't been addressed yet, but we will address that with probably a bid for all of these buildings that have the same need. So we will go out with for, you know, a, or a bid to repair all exterior or actually update all exterior emergency lighting. So that, that's, and we would do that across the townwide. So that's the 2,000 that you're grabbing at Independence Hall and probably some of the others. It's a, it's a common theme throughout all the buildings. So we're going to bundle them together with a electrician to do them all, and it'll come over $15,000. And it requires us to go out to bid.
That, that's helpful. That's actually very helpful. Just when you talk about doing that in more of a blanket umbrella-type process, would that cover more than the 17 facilities that you've listed, that are listed here?
No. So this, it's going to, this is a working document that Silver Petroselli helped us make with these 17 buildings. A couple of the bigger buildings that were left out, Greg, were, say, the fire training or the Smith Richardson, which were up, you know, which are new buildings that are up to code and, and weren't needed. Other, is there a building that you're concerned with?
No, not at all. I just want to, what you described makes a lot of sense to me. That seems like it's an efficient way to do it. I just was trying to better understand the process. But can I ask about Penfield Pavilion, what the 9,200 would be used for there if we're looking to close it soon?
So Penfield Pavilion and, and, and keep in mind that that's, that's up in the air still, the locker room side could possibly be salvaged, correct? So let me just find it. Bear with me. Yeah, I don't really, on my list, I don't really have Penfield, so it might have been taken care of already. So I have like a working list that I have that there's some of the smaller items, like you said, were, were handled already.
Okay, and then one, one last question. I understand you, you mentioned, James, that the 2,500 for Independence Hall was for the exterior lighting. I get it. But last year before I was on the board, I believe there was an, an approved amount for repairs at Independence Hall. How does that dovetail with the work, this work as well? And what's the status of that? Has that money been spent or has that work been done?
So that non-recurring we did last year was for reorganizing and re, you know, organizing each department. And some of that has been done, if you've poked your head into the engineering department, that's been done. So, and, and to be honest, that's, that, that's not part of this. This is life safety and another survey. So, so, you know, it's, it has nothing to do with this, but I think Jared kind of touched on it in his spreadsheet prior that he had, you know, somewhere he, he had that, like the same type of thing is where the senior center, we have you know, ARPA money for that. And then there's also money left over from this, from this ask last year for the audit. So that is taken into consideration in Jared's spreadsheet. I saw it there as, you know, as we were looking through it as it was up on the screen. So, you know, yeah, there are considerations where it's not a double ask for, 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 you know, the same facility twice.
Thank you, James. I have no further questions.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Mr. Schmidt, did you?
Yeah, I just wanted to let everybody know and anybody who's trying to stream the coverage. Apparently we're having some technical difficulties and the audio is not working, perhaps a video too. But if, if people want to listen, at least they can, they can phone in. And I'll give you that number. The, the phone number is 510-338-9438. And the access code, meeting number is 624-512-956.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Schmidt. Is that people who are watching on Fair TV?
I believe that's right. If they're, if they're trying to stream it on Fair TV on the, on the website.
Okay, but people on the WebEx are okay?
That's right. The WebEx is fine.
Okay. But we have a recording, right? Yep. Yep. No worries. Thank you for letting us know. Denied. I have questions on this item, but other questions from the board? No? Okay. Yeah, so, Mr. Ryan, I guess I, I'm struggling a little bit with this one, particularly the 14 points. I guess as I'm looking at this list, this is 17 discrete projects, seems like. And we have a big one in here for the Bigelow Senior Center. And I'm just, I know we have this Silver Petroselli report, but you know, I'm struggling to, to look at this in this fashion. Because it's, it's so many different things. And also, you know, like we have five fire stations on here. Are these, are these items that, you know, typically we'd be hearing from the chief about? Or are these building maintenance things that typically department heads aren't involved in? I guess I just, the, the way this is being presented, I'm, I'm having, I'm having a hard time understanding why it's presented as one item with one 14-point backup. I know we have this report, but there's just, it doesn't seem like one project to me, and particularly the Bigelow Senior Center. You know, I'm not, I'm not clear how all of these things relate to the, the larger project. And in that one in particular, the ARPA money, is the ARPA 850 you know, part of this? Was it meant to be part of this? I just not sure I understand the whole thing, if you, if you're following my question.
I totally follow it. I think it's more of a Jared answer, if you could help me out, Jared, with that.
So what I would say is that, you know, the way that everything is connected is that these are all, these are urgent, urgent needs that need to get done. And so that's why we've lumped them into one project and made them the first phase of what the, you know, what was requested by the boards last year to do this audit. And so this is what came out of the audit, and these are the urgent, the urgent things in each of the facilities that need to get done. As far as the, the ARPA funding for the senior center that was included in these costs, however, because we know that, you know, that, that, that those, that the senior center upgrades are being funded through ARPA, that we then back them out of that cost. So that, because we know we're, we're getting a grant, just like any other, any other projects where we have an overall cost associated with them. You know, typically we, we will net out the, any grant funding for those.
So just as a follow-up, for example, the, the Bigelow item in here, it's 907,000. If I were to include the portion of soft costs associated with that, that's another 270, say. So that's up to a million two or something. And then you know, I, I guess, I mean, personally, I would like to see, I just, I, I don't know how to evaluate these together. Bigelow in particular is a large project. And I can't recall whether the ARPA 850 was supposed to address the same items as what's on here. I don't even know if we had this report at the time. I mean, I, perhaps other board members.
I might be able to help elaborate on that if, if you could, if you could, if I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I.
No, 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 I just, I guess, to step back, my, my struggle here is I feel like this to me is like a little mini non-recurring capitalist like we get at the beginning of the year. But for those, we get each project evaluated separately. And here it's like, I know that these are all safety issues, but we have a bunch of disparate projects here which really don't have a lot to do with each other. And we really, the 14 points is a very, you know, we've got one 14-point analysis on all of these projects and it, it's, it's really not helpful, I guess. So maybe you can help me with that.
Well, I, I, I think the 14 points in the ask goes back to our presentation to the board with Silver Petroselli with the 10-year plan. And these, the first year, we were going to hit the priority ones. And so that's where that, that I believe that came from. As far as the senior center, the, the ARPA money ask was for 850 for, to make the restrooms ADA compliant, to upgrade the kitchen and to replace the rooftop units. So if you go to the items on, on the list for the senior center alone, that, that I believe takes away almost $800,000 off of that list. So in Jared's other spreadsheet that he had posted, I believe he, he captured that, that it, we subtracted that from which would have been a bigger ask. And, you know, on the 10-year plan, in fact, going by Silver Petroselli, we were asking for 3 million and change. And we're asking, the difference is subtract the senior center money and the money that's left over with the audit request last year. And that's where it brings it down to 1.9. Am I correct, Jared?
That's right. Yes.
Ms. Leclerc?
So we haven't done any further investigation or pricing of any of these projects beyond what Silver Petroselli has done?
No.
Silver, Silver Petroselli. I mean, it's pretty, I thought what they put in there was pretty comprehensive. Obviously, they're, they're giving estimates like, you know, kind of like an engineer or an architect would for some of our other projects. And then once we, you know, once we are going to have the, ready to have the work done, we'll have a more precise dollar amount.
But we don't have a specific budget for each one of these projects that are included beyond their report?
I don't believe, not that I'm aware of.
And then my next question is, how can we take the appropriation for the study and use the remain, remaining piece of that towards this project? Are we authorized to do that? Is there authorization in that bond? To, to use that those funds for something else besides the study?
Right. So the study was authorized as part of the non-recurring capital authorization last year. And the, the, the way the authorization was written, there was some, and, and I think purposefully, there was some latitude given because this question did, I remember this question coming up during the debate last year about if, you know, if there was money left over that that could be used to start working on the projects. And I don't know if Mr. Staffstrom is on, he is on the, on the line. I don't know if he wants to expand further on that.
Yes, it's John Staffstrom from Pullman and Comley Bond Council. We did review that question. Jared actually asked us to look back at the resolution and the resolution clearly allows for the study and then also if there are leftover funds for the implementation of the recommendations.
So I'd be disappointed to hear that because we usually try to keep it very specific. So I guess, and my question is, did you provide that resolution somewhere here in this packet?
No. I believe that resolution is in the packet, Jared.
It's not.
Ms. Leclerc, are you, I have a follow-up to your question too. Are you, are you done?
Yes, I'm done. Thank you.
Because, and I'm sorry, I don't have the, a hard copy of this report. I'm looking at it online, but some of these, so this column, you can go back to each one of these projects, and then you have to go to each one, and they have red boxes in them in the thing. And some of them have incomplete estimates, like it's blank and it says to be determined. I, I, I just don't think these are. I'm just going to say, I, I'm not sure this is, this is ready to come before us. I'm not, I'm not really comfortable with these numbers. I mean, some, these are coming off this report. But as I'm paging through this, and I'm sorry because it's a 400-page report, some of the items that are labeled as red have open estimates on the cost, so there's not even a dollar amount in here. And I just, as I, as I look at this, again, I'm, to Ms. Leclerc's point, I'm, I'm struggling because I, I feel like we don't really, you know, we've, we've bunched these things together, completely understanding that they're all health and safety issues. But there's a lot of things on here. Some of them are small. I think Mr. Curly said it, like if, you know, animal control for 4,600, I'm not sure why we're bonding something like that. I, I just have a lot of questions on this and I'm wondering if it, I don't know how other, I'd like to hear from other board members. I, I'm not really comfortable with this based on what I'm seeing. And I, I would almost prefer to defer it, but I, I'm not feeling like I could support it.
I'm sure. Could I respond to that?
Please.
You know, there's a limitation on, on the authorization that we're looking for here. I, 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 I hope, I know that the, because this was the approach, that we would look at those things that were most important and most urgent. And so I get, if there are other, other items on here that are better defined later on, then we would, we would have to come before the boards and, and ask for an additional authorization. So I, I guess what I would say is that, you know, if everybody agrees that these are urgent items to, to get done, then this would be a really good start to that because I, I do think that this amount that's, that we're looking to authorize, you know, would hit a lot of these, would cover a lot of the urgent items that are in here. So, you know, I, I really hope that we could move forward with this, even though, as you say, this could, there could be additional costs in the future, depending on, you know, what, what additional information we get on, on the items that may not be completely defined in terms of cost.
Yeah, I appreciate the, the urgency. I mean, I do, I do want to know, we, we've had this information for a little bit of time at least. Part of it though, I, I feel like when we're approved, so we've got this $2 million authorization. And I, with all these projects combined that are, again, very different, we've got things from fire stations to library to the senior center. You know, when it's authorized, I, I feel like we just lose what goes where, you know? And what do we accomplish with the $2 million? And, you know, we don't really have, when they're grouped like this, there's no mechanism to figure out if we spend the 2 million, how much of this gets done, pieces of it, all of it. I guess, you know, for myself, I would, even if this is not 17 disparate projects, it feels like it, it, this is sort of a mini version of the capital non-recurring list, and that's not how we handle that one. And maybe some of these get grouped together like the fire stations in terms of the rationale and the support. But yeah, I'm, I'm struggling with this backup. I'm, I'm not comfortable with this personally. So I, curious to hear feedback from other board members. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, when we received the Silver Petroselli review, I know I made a specific comment because there were a couple of things in there with Town Hall that I thought were really low. The numbers were low. And I don't have the 600-page backup. I only have the 200-page backup. For some reason, I guess I downloaded the wrong one. So I don't have it, I don't have it in front of me right now. But I, but I did read it and I remember reading it then. And when I was reviewing the agenda, I looked at this number and I said, first off, I can't believe we're down to, to the dollar, right, $778A. $778 A. But B, I thought to myself, there's no way we're doing all this stuff for $2 million. This is all, for me, this is almost like the down payment. This is the first installment of the Silver Petroselli work that's going to occur, right? And even though I, I, I do agree with you, there are, there is data in that, that, that 400 page briefing we received or that, um, um, document we received, that is, that is incomplete. And they said, we don't have enough data. I think there are a lot of things in here that, that are, that are time sensitive. And knowing that 1.94 billion is not going to cover it all. I mean, I, I feel pretty comfortable issuing this bond, knowing that this is probably going to turn into a much larger number when that, that full statement of work is going to be installed. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that, Mr. DeWitt. I guess the way, and maybe I'm not saying it correctly. I feel like the Silver Petroselli report, I almost view it as a report for management, as an operational, you know, roadmap to figure out what we have to do here. I'm not seeing it as, you know, support for the, the project. I mean, these are, you know, I think dated, some of them are incomplete. They're, you know, they don't go together. Those are my concerns. Um, I think that, you know, one of them that we're going to talk about later, which I, one of the DPW buildings, um, you know, we, we have a separate request for that. I think the, is the 450,000 that we have for the solid waste, is that, um, duplicated in here, solid waste facility?
That's not part of this request. No.
It's not part of this number. So it's not part of.
That's not one of the, that's not one of the 17 buildings.
Okay. I thought that one for some reason was covered in here. Yeah, I, I, I hear you, Mr. DeWitt. This is like kind of a down payment and we'll get as far as we get. But I just, this is not the, uh, type of, of support I would expect to see for, for, um, a bond authorization of, of this size. I, I feel like we, uh, you know, we can use the Silver Petroselli report, but I really think that the board should see, you know, that report turned into the, the type of, uh, support backup cost estimate that's actually had thought put into it in terms of, um, you know, the individual projects and, and what we want to do with it. So I'll just leave it at that. Mr. DeWitt?
And, and, and if I may add, um, the, the other component of this that makes me feel comfortable is, is Mr. Ryan, frankly, because I know, I know how he operates. I, I know his work. I know his team's work, you know? I don't think $1, this is going to be squandered on anything that's not very important. And I feel very comfortable that his team will be, will prioritize the funds he gets. And, and listen, he, he may run out before he gets to the end of the list. I think that's a real reality. I don't want to be, I want to be clear here. I don't think this is enough money, right? But, um, I think the money that we're going to give Mr. Ryan and his team is going to go to the right things and, and the right priorities.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Ms. Marmian?
And I, I, I trust Mr. Ryan as well, but I, I do think that we've been burned before in terms of not having specificity in terms of a project, in terms of its scope. And I don't know what we would lose, except obviously some of these are very pressing, um, items. In terms of asking for a 14 point rationale backup for these different projects. And maybe we could group together the fire station as a 14 point, 114 point, so lessen it. But I think we, this is, it's a big ask and I think we should take our time and really know what we're approving in terms of, um, the bonding.
So I have a question. I, I have a question if I could. Do what? Can I ask a question?
Uh, Ms. Ryan, yes, sorry, you're, you're blocked on the screen. Someone's sharing it for, we're, we're hearing a voice, uh, but yes, yeah, go ahead, please.
Can you see me now? I'm sorry. Um, so.
Yes.
So my, my question is, if Silver Petroselli's plan, because honestly, I believe I'm going to be coming here for the next couple of years, right? Obviously with Silver Petris' plan. And, and so you're, you're saying that their numbers aren't good enough. Their survey and, and, um, analysis isn't good enough or specific enough. And so I would take that report from them and then go get specific quotes from a contractor? And then come back and make my 14 point summary for, with specific quotes from a contractor? One of the, one of the issues with that is they're going to ask, is there funding for this? And I'm going to say, well, all right, I'm going to go for it once I get the quote. That's always just a little bit of a hurdle of mine that I have, to be honest.
Yeah, no, I, I, again, part of what sort of caught my eye was that some of these estimates in here aren't even complete. You know, I, I respect the report that they did, but they have open items in here. So these, these numbers are not even, uh, complete. I mean, I don't know how incomplete they are because I don't know how big the open items are. And I, I think, um, I, I know others want to see. Part of what I struggle with this is we approve a bond authorization like this and then it's like, it goes into the abyss. We don't get any follow up. We don't get a budget to actual. We don't see where that money is, is going in terms of how much of this is getting accomplished. So, um, regardless of what we do, I think, I think we need that. But that's, that's really where I'm coming from. Again, I, 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 I struggle with all of this being in one place. And I do think some of these smaller items, I, I really, if they're that urgent, I really don't know why we're waiting for a bond on some of these items, considering where we are in our budget this year, um, if these are truly health and safety issues. But, um, let me, let me pause. Mr. Matola, you had a question?
So, you know, my, if you can do this, I think maybe doing a 14 points for the fire stations, for example, might be beneficial. Because on your, if I recall, on your 14 points, with all of these, you, the, you indicate that the reliability of the cost is, uh, a six between a, um, a zero and 10. But, but if you put the fire stations together, maybe the reliability for the cost there is a nine or something. Um, it's kind of hard to, they're all different type projects and we have one reliability cost. Um, I think that's, that's kind of what I'm struggling with. I really want to, want to get this going. Yeah. I mean, is there a way that we can, that you can do that and bunch these projects together? I mean, maybe have Silver Petroselli eyeball it one more time and just come back.
There's definitely a way. I just, the feedback that we received in February, I thought this was the way that we were going to go about it. But yeah, there's definitely a way. You're, you're probably, you know, correct that if it was just one, two, three, four, five buildings, yeah, the, the, that average and reliability definitely goes up.
Yeah, it would change probably, I think, make a lot of us more comfortable, and at least me. So that, that's my, my, my concern.
Thank you, Mr. Matola. Mr. Walsh?
While I hear what everyone has said so far, I, I have my real concern is that all of these issues are, are level one issues. They all involve heating and ventilation, air conditioning, something I think we're going to hear from tonight. And to not have that at other buildings, I think is an issue. Life safety issues? I mean, seriously, we're going to let life safety issues not get funded and be pushed off maybe for a year? I think we really got to look at this because we have a liability on the line here. There's code issues that have been identified that if something happens, we will be sued. It's not if we will be sued. If something happens, we will be sued. Because we're talking at a public meeting, that we all know about the code issues. And now it's coming down to whether we've, I'm not saying that the process can't be better. I think we can tell the administration what we expect on level two, three, four, five, whatever. But I think on this level one, I think there should be a priority. I don't want to sit here and figure out something happened at the senior center, that's a code violation and people were injured. Or people, handicap people didn't have proper notification on how to get out of the building. I don't want to be that person. So for me, it's a priority because it's a level one and we now know about it. So I think we should move forward with this. But advise the administration of what we think we need more of. And if we have to have a separate meeting, a month, two months over the summer, I don't care when, we can meet with Mr. Ryan, hopefully in person, and the other administration people and say, going forward, what we'd like to see is the following and go forward in that way. But I, I know I'll sleep better at night, knowing that the, the level one things that have been identified are taken care of. I mean, structural, that seems like if that was any of our houses, we'd kind of get on it kind of quickly. Um, accessibility, I mean, all of these things are, are, are kind of important. And while they're, the communication of how we wanted it handled, maybe could have been better amongst all of us. I'm not blaming anybody, I'm not blaming anybody on this board. I'm not blaming Mr. Ryan. I'm not blaming the administration. Maybe it could have been thought out more. And maybe that's for us to do, to explain to them, maybe a better way to do it. I kind of like the idea about the fire stations, having the chief here explaining some of this stuff, maybe packaging some of that stuff together. But I think we have to get our hands around some of this stuff. Because either it's going to be done kind of the way it is, but maybe more 14 point issues on the stuff being presented. Or it's going to have to be, we're doing the fire stations. And this is the 14 points on every project at the fire stations. So I would feel better and I'm going to vote for funding it this year. But I would join with some of you saying, how can we improve the process going forward on the other levels, not, not the, what I would consider to be emergency level one issue.
Yeah, thank you, um, Mr. Walsh. I, I actually don't disagree with you. I do, um, do want to point out, you know, we have had this, this work has been done for quite some time. We saw this report in February. We approved ARPA money for the senior center last September. So we're, you know, uh, you know, I understand the safety issues, but we are sitting here having known about these things for a long time. So I don't, um, you know, I don't want to forget that because that's, that's just unacceptable that now we're sitting here saying, okay, everyone's hair is on fire. And we don't, you know, the board doesn't feel like they have what they need, but we have to approve it anyway. When the reality is, this is not new. We didn't find out about these yesterday. And in fact, I thought that the extra money for the town wide audit that's in here was provided so that if any emergencies came up, they could be fixed on the spot with that money. That was, I thought what I heard at the Board of Selectment. So, you know, I just want to say that I don't, um, you know, we don't want to do anything to put the town at risk, but that's already been happening. And now we're sitting here, you know, with, with this information and sort of between a rock and a hard place. But, um, I do want to go on record, I don't like this analysis. And I, I think that we, this just plays into the larger issue of we have got to have ongoing tracking of these projects, just like we do with our operating budget, so that we can actually see when we approve money, what's happening, is it getting done? Is it over, under, et cetera? So I just wanted to say that. Um, Mr. Testani?
Madam Chair, why can't we make that to correspond to this? I, let's just take item number seven, right, that we're talking about. I'm not saying incorporate it into the bond because, you know, Mr. Staffstrom would have to rework the bond. What I'm saying, I'm saying as well, is I, I, actual item itself to say, we want, let's say this item, right? Not uh, 41,949,778. Let's just say for the sake of argument, we approve it. Relation for that report by a date cert or whatever. You know what I'm trying to say? Make what you just said as part of what we would expect. Exactly. Part of the motion. Thank you.
Sorry, I should probably defer to our attorneys about putting it in the motion or changing anything. So, um.
Madam Chair, under Roberts rules, I'm pretty sure we can change the motion anytime we want.
Yeah, no, I just don't want to do anything in, agree, just, just worried, just, it's not going to impact the bond resolution is what I'm clarifying, right? So, because the motion right now is to, to approve the bond resolution. Um, and so if we want to, happy to take that. But, um, yeah, I mean, and I appreciate the suggestion, Mr. Testani. Um, Mr. Stark?
Mr. Ryan, uh, if I look at page 316 of the Silver Petroselli report, uh, ventilation for the Burr Mansion, just as an example, uh, the mechanical room in the basement costs 42,500. That's their estimate. Now, when you actually go to get that work done, you, you do have to get a quote, right?
I'm going to go out to bid, yeah, for probably multiple basements that need ventilation.
Okay. So I, I guess the issue for us is whether we can bond on the basis of the Silver Petroselli estimate or whether we have to wait till you actually get a quote. And then, and then if you look at, um, page 27, the, uh, 140 Reef Road Facility, uh, as I, um, Ms. Charlton pointed out, there's some blanks that in, in the, in the number one red priorities, like the, uh, uh, roof drain strainers are blocked with debris as a zero. So you'd have to come back to us for that, I guess, right?
No, so that, that's a roof drain that needed attention right there in their walkthrough. They didn't put a price on it because it was cleaned and taken care of. So it's, I, I, maybe, maybe that's the disconnect is if it was blank, there was no price for it because it just needed maintenance the day that they were doing their survey, survey. So there's no price on it. We took care of it that day and, and it was completed. So if there are blanks, I, I'm going to look through it again and look for them. And, and maybe I can elaborate, but, um.
No, that's fine.
For the sake of, for the sake of, of, of safety and the risk factor, I, I, I don't even, you know, it's not, I don't think it's a great idea that I elaborate on some of the things that, that, you know, that are might, that are, are less of value, that haven't been done yet. Um, they are, they're, they're, the risk is, is, for example, I'm going to go back to the, to the Independence Hall, emergency lighting on the exterior. The emergency lighting takes, i- is for when there's a power outage and on the exterior of the building. And the building has a generator that backs up all the exterior light. So the emergency light, that is $2,000 for, you know, both entrances and maybe around the, you know, the side by the flags, to have emergency lighting there and for the 15 seconds that it takes the generator to, to, to ramp up. So just to shed some light on, uh, why aren't these done yet? Because, okay, some of them are, you know, a little bit redundant, but that's code these days. That's code compliance. So, you know, I'm not making light out of the report, but I, I need to elaborate on some of them to kind of defend myself a little bit here.
I totally hear what you're saying. Um, in, in a corporate bond context, you, you usually are presented with sources and uses, uh, of, of a particular bond or equity issue. And if I had this level of detail in that context, I would, um, I would be thrilled. So, um, I, I think the report is adequate for, um, our current purposes and I, and I would support, um, bonding or approving the, the initial amount. But I do like the proviso that, um, there ought to be some reporting back on it. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Um, Mr. DeWitt?
Um, I just completely lost my train of thought. Um, oh, um, process, right? We talk about process and I'm a process guy. Couple of months ago, I didn't like the 14 points we were getting. I put it out there and we're getting great 14 points. So I want to, you know, acknowledge that. But, but this process, and Mr. Ryan just said it a few minutes ago, we sat here, we sat virtually one night and went through this 400 page report. And we didn't, as a board, say, hey, by the way, James, you know what? Just ignore that report. Go figure it out. Go get 100, go get 100 estimates. Nor did we tell him to use the estimates. But if he, in, in light of not having anything else, I mean, what else can he use? So I know I'm, I'm, I'm like the, the James Ryan cheerleader here tonight. But I, but I don't know what else he has, you know? And i- if, if we start going back to estimates for everything and, you know, purchasing policy guy, three bids and all that good kind of stuff, we, we could be talking about a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. And Mr. Ryan, I just want to react to you saying you needed to defend yourself. I, please don't take this as a, a personal criticism. I think we're just trying to understand, you know, this is part of, at least for me, a larger. I think we're just trying to understand, you know, this is part of, at least for me, a larger frustration with our our capital projects and the lack of ongoing, any ongoing status report or transparency into what happens after we do a bond authorization. So please, please don't, please don't.
I just hope I shed some light on some of the issues.
You did, you did. And I and I'm and I appreciate the comments from my colleagues. And if anyone wants to, you know, amend the motion or or make a suggestion as to how we do that, or if we just want to do it informally, I'm I'm open to that and then we can move on this item.
I, and I'll do whatever, I agree with what Mr. Testane said. I don't, I don't know if we have to make a formal motion, but maybe we vote on this with an understanding on the record that we want report, just report it back to us. And maybe at some point we put it on a future agenda to get updates.
Sounds like a great motion to the future.
Does that make sense?
Sounds good.
So.
I I don't know whether we need a motion. I think that our chair, I think our chairwoman.
Exactly.
Find a point in time to an agenda that it might fit.
Exactly.
To come in so we could all discuss it and maybe come to a consensus on what we'd expect the next time.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Walsh. And, you know, if anyone has thoughts about it, you know, it might be a, you know, one idea might be to during our quarterly review process, you know, to have a quarterly review on our capital as well as on our operating. Because, you know, we don't get that. And I, you know, I know, for example, as as part of what we've been discussing on the, you know, the in the in the Capital Working Group, that, you know, there's, there's a lot of stuff that we approve and then that sort of sits for a while. So I think that would be helpful for everyone. So, Mr. Schmidt, we'll talk about that. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for the discussion.
Just mention one thing. I mean, Mr. Ryan, thank you for your presentation tonight. And I I presume that you could give us updates once, like on the phase one stuff on how much this money did, what percentage of the stuff got done and what it didn't get done, correct?
I'd love to. Yes, I'd love to.
Okay, okay. And then just two other quick points before we vote on it. My other concern on this is that I would like to spend some of this ARPA money, since it's all just sitting in the bank. So some of it's going to be spent. And I like the fact that it's going to be spent on level one stuff, things that are important. So that's one of the other reasons that I liked that the way this presentation was being made and that the administration was prioritizing the level one things. So I would, you know, we're sitting here with all this ARPA money. I'd like Mr. Ryan to start spending the eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards towards getting it done. Thank you.
Agreed. Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Curly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I want to welcome Mr. DeWitt to Team Ryan, because I've been a cheerleader of yours for a long time, James. But just a couple of quick follow-ups. I agree with everything, virtually everything that everyone talked about. I think quarterly review of the status of the spending and how it compares. As I indicated earlier, my concern is more that you won't have enough money. And I think there's a likelihood that while this report was published in February, the data collected for it predated the publication. And and in the last five, six months, we've seen a lot more inflation than anyone ever expected. So I think, given that, I think I believe the numbers are a little stale. I also think the lack of a contingency is going to be an issue because it that when you do go out for bids, you're going to have a tough time. So I wish you luck on that. And certainly, the the one question I did have for you, though, James, is knowing that you may not be able to get through everything on the list, do you have an idea of how you might prioritize it? Obviously, the Bigelow Senior Center is the largest big ticket item on the list. But but these are all critical one items. So I didn't know if you had given some thought as to how you might prioritize it.
So the Bigelow Center, just to touch on that, that's going to be like, like they said, it's the ARPA money, a lot of that's going there. The exterior, the exterior lighting, you know, like it's, it's hard to prioritize that. And when I first read that in the report, I was like, that's a little bit redundant. But to get it up to code, you know, that's so that those things are going to have to, I'm going to have to follow up with them. There's some pull stations in the basements that are needed, you know, like there's, I have priorities. There, there definitely the fire alarm and and the emergency lighting. There's, you know, I have ventilation in basements. And then I this, there's like going to be a seismic analysis for structural. Those are pretty much the the priorities. There, you know, there's some kitchen hoods, you know, that are going to, you know, I see that the fire department's in the room, but they're, those are going to be, you know, less of a priority because they have kitchen hoods already, but they're not up to code. So that, you know, there's, I'm going to be busy, believe me. And yes, I leave fire alarm and emergency lighting on my priorities first.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Okay, so so and I appreciate the conversation with everyone. I think it's helpful. So maybe I'll I'll speak offline with Mr. Schmidt, but maybe we'll plan on, I mean, our next quarterly meetings in a couple of weeks. So that might be a lot, but maybe as from a process standpoint, go forward. Starting in our September meeting, we can incorporate our capital projects as part of our quarterly review update. So with that, if if there are no other comments, I'd like to move to a vote on this item. All right. So to get my glasses on. All right. So can I have a motion on on item seven, to to approve the one million nine hundred and forty nine seven seven eight for the cost of the townwide facility systems upgrade and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Stark, all in favor? Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Okay. All right, with that, let us move on to item eight. To hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating seven million dollars for the costs associated with the emergency radio project, authorizing a grant to reimburse three point five million of such appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance some appropriation, finance such appropriation. So for reference, the backup for this item, the resolution is on page four seventy nine. The fourteen point analysis begins on page four eighty three. I do want to just let the board know that this item is inclusive of the one hundred and twenty five thousand dollar radio project that was originally in the operating budget. So this this does in fact cover that as well. So I will, let's see, I think we have Chief McCarthy and Chief Callum Morris here to discuss this item. Gentlemen.
Yes, ma'am. Chief McCarthy, if you, if I can start. Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. This proposal is to replace the existing public safety radio system and integrate onto the statewide system to improve portable radio coverage within buildings, within the town and within the state, our state jurisdictional area. The project will also provide increased user interoperability, eliminate recurring costs related to the current radio systems and use existing radio communication assets, including communication center and the tower at our headquarters building. Current systems for fire and police have experienced numerous failures and do not currently provide sufficient radio coverage throughout the town. They also do not support local and state and federal interoperability. Currently, all the surrounding police and fire jurisdictions are currently either transitioning or have transitioned over to the state system. We are fortunate to have been awarded a three four, three point five million dollar grant to support the infrastructure of the project. And we are seeking approval for additional three point five million to support the end user and additional costs related to the project. Chief McCarthy, if there's anything you'd like to add to that? You're on mute.
I just wanted to add that this project's been in the capital forecast for five years. We have suspended radio improvements in both departments anticipating this. And backing up even further, following recommendations from the nine eleven commission to improve interoperability, our region was able to get a six million dollar urban area security initiative grant that allowed us to to improve the backbone and connect with the state police system. And that's why so many of our regional partners from police and fire and emergency management have already migrated to the system that we're proposing to migrate now. So there is a lot of investment that's been made and federal grant money that makes this project come in at the price tag that we're proposing.
Thank you both. I know that we've spent some time talking about this at previous meetings. And I know everyone on the board is aware of its importance. Do we have any questions on this item? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion to adopt this bond resolution? Well, how about we wave the reading of the motion, Mr. Testane and Mr. DeWitt? All right, so motion to approve this. Mr. Testane, motions. Mr. DeWitt, seconds. All in favor? Okay, it is unanimous. That was easy, guys.
Thank you very much.
If I can just add kudos to Captain Colville. I know that he was recognized at the Board of Selectmen meeting for his work to get the three and a half million dollar federal earmark to help offset the costs. So kudos to Captain Colville and the Police Department for that.
Absolutely. Thank you. Unbelievable job. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to item nine. To hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating two million two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the tidegate systems project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Backup, the resolution is on page four eighty seven. The fourteen points is on page four ninety. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. Okay, this item is before us, and I think we have Mr. Bishop here to take us through this item.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. This was a project that was in the Capitol Hopper before I arrived in Town Hall. I believe it started back in two thousand and nineteen. This is for replacement of tidegate system on Pine Creek. The actual infrastructure is located next to Quanis Field, just north of Old Dam Road. And many of you might recognize it, haven't walked our open space by the historic railroad bridge that sits pretty much on top of the existing three tide gates. The original gates were installed in nineteen eighty, they were replaced in nineteen ninety nine. And there've been some repairs to them made in twenty ten and twenty twelve, similar to my previous request in the nonrecurring capital budgets with tidegates. This suddenly is coming before you tonight because of their, at the end of their lifetime. Actually, one of them has was, has a gate that recently failed that was being repaired a few weeks ago. Project, you know, importance, obviously, as we know, as a flood control structure, has a has the benefit of controlling tidal waters in and out as far north as the former Fairfield Lumber Yard through that tidal tidal system as well as tidal and marine habitat. The the tricky part I've been dealing with most recently in the past couple of weeks was the actual railroad bridge itself that sits on top of the Earth and Dyke. Right now, the the planned engineered design involves replacement and abandonment of the three existing self-regulating tidegates with replacing them in using five self-regulating tidegates. Part of that design also in with increased efficiency will realign the tidal channel to its original direction and state. The, as I mentioned, the historic railroad bridge, I've been dealing with the State Historic Preservation Office with respect to its condition. It was registered on the national, with the National Park Service. I believe the eighties or ninety, I'm sorry, in nineteen ninety two. It was placed on the ground. It doesn't span anything, but it is a bridge of historic significance dating back to pre-Civil War. It was relocated from the Mill Hill overpass area. And as as recently of, after this fourteen, this was written, my conversation with Chipo involved their request to restore the the trusses of the structure and maintain it on that site as a, as in appearance of a bridge. It is historically significant based on its architecture and cast iron materials. But in the past thirty or forty years, has fallen into disrepair with, due to little to no maintenance and exposure to salty conditions. We currently do have approval from Connecticut DEP. Conditional approval was actually sent this week. The Army Corps of Engineers approval is pending a formal letter of approval from Chipo. So people is in the air as far as moving forward. But like I said, we do have approval from the state at this point. Working with Race as a coastal engineer, as well as another engineer structurally from Danbury with respect to the bridge itself. I think that's about it. Open any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Bishop. Questions from the board? Ms. Marmian?
Thank you very much, Mr. Bishop. So just, so I'm clear. So we can't replace these, we can't do the replacements without the removal of the bridge. And we're waiting for approval to do that because it's considered an historical bridge. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. My conversation with the engineers and Chipo involved, it would be built into our kind of agreement that the restoration and placement of the bridge at the, on our open space would have to be done within two years of completion of the tidegate replacement project. So there would be some time to move the bridge, get it out of our way, install the new tidegates, abandon the old ones, and then either simultaneously or shortly thereafter, complete the restoration and and set up the mock, the mock railroad bridge on site.
All right, well, that that's very helpful to know that that's the time period and that that's the kind of process that will be followed. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Other questions? Other questions from the board? Okay. Seeing none. See where I am. All right, can we have a motion to approve the bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating two point two five million for the tidegate system project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Curly, all in favor? Aye, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Bishop. All right, we are going to move on to. Thank you again. All right, we're going to move on to item ten. To hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating four hundred and fifty thousand for the cost of the transfer station repair project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. This resolution is on page four ninety two of the posted backup. The fourteen points is on page four ninety five. For the board's information, this item is inclusive of the ninety thousand dollars that was cut from the operating budget related to the transfer station. So this is an expanded project that addresses those critical repairs that that were that were the ninety thousand. So we have John Cattell here, Mr. Cattell. I'll turn it to you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. As mentioned, this included ninety thousand dollars, which were, that I was putting into repairs, stairs and collection of some sludge and juices to. collection of some sludge and juices to address safety issues, environmental issues, and some floor drains initially. This is a 40-year plus old building that had deteriorated over the years. In 2020, a report was done, surveyed by Petricelli, identifying all the problematic issues with it. The board had approved $250,000 to address some of these capital issues which have been completed, that which was the electrical service upgrade, the lighting upgrades, the roof replacement, bathrooms. So now this is the next step to address some of these other issues and, and other items that are not working. The doors don't close. Like I said, you got issues with drains, you got environmental issues, security issues, safety issues, mechanical issues, and some structural issues that will eventually deteriorate further. And with that, I'll take any questions for specifics.
Okay, thank you very much. Comments, questions from the board on this item? Mr. Walsh?
Mr. Cotel, Jim Walsh, how are you?
Fantastic.
Great. Me too. Question for you. Will all this be done in the one year or is it going to take longer than a year to get completed?
I'm shooting to get most of it done in the first year. The tipping four will probably take a little longer. This is a building that has to be continually operational six days a week. So it's planning to make sure we don't get shut down and work around the projects keeping it operational.
Okay, so when, how long do you think it'll take to the whole, just so this board has some idea of how like we want to start checking on some of these capital projects to make sure they're completed? How long do you think it will take to complete the entire project?
I'd say at least probably two years for some of this. Like I said, the initial immediate safety issues, security issues we want to address, replacement of the doors that may involve certain supply chain issues, I'm not sure. But like I said, initially, I was going to address some of the immediate problems and attack the others as able. But I'll just have to work a lot more than harder.
Is that staircase issue going to be able to be taken care of pretty quickly or?
That's one of my first priorities.
Excellent. Obviously, there's a liability issue there. So the sooner you can get that done, I guess, the better. And it is your goal then, once these new doors are put into, at the end of every night, pretty much lock the whole facility up, close it down, close all the doors, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you so much. I appreciate your, oh, just one other question. Is there any contingency amount in, in your numbers? So that if the project went over, there were supply chain issues, the cost of steel for inflation goes up, that, you know, you'd have any extra money to be able to do the project?
I threw some, in the 14 points, you can see I did throw some money as contingency as well, addressing some miscellaneous items. How quick, how much the inflationary items hit it, increase these amounts? I can't really tell, but I'm hoping to meet it. A lot of these are estimates that are based on, as I said, the stairwell is a fairly recent estimate, but some of these other estimates are based on other building factors that might be a little bit older.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other questions from the board on this item? Okay, seeing none. Can I have a motion to adopt the bond resolution appropriating $450,000 for the cost of the transfer station project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance it? Mr. DeWitt, seconded by Mr. Walsh, all in favor. Okay, it is unanimous. Thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mr. Cotel.
Thank you. Have a pleasant evening.
You too. We are going to move on to item 11. To here. Consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating $4,125,000 for the costs of the Roger Ludlow Middle School turf field project and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Can I have a motion to put this item before us? Mr. Matola, seconded by Mr. Curly. All right, thank you. We have Mr. Calabrese here to take us through this item. Welcome, Anthony.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Finance. Sorry I couldn't be in person with you guys tonight. I'll try to do my best to run you through this project. And just the quick background on this is I've had this on our waterfall charts since 2017. Presented it in the spring or winter of 2019, ended up pulling it off the Board of Selectmen agenda at their meeting as things around town were happening and a lot of unknowns. So here we are, 2022, and trying to push this one forward again. So we are shovel ready. What we're looking to do is Ludlow Middle School, the fields on the lower side of Unclea Road. Basically, you could fit two fields back there. What we're looking to put in would be a full-size multipurpose field, which basically would be a fit for football, lacrosse, men's and women's lacrosse, field hockey. Pretty much you name it, you'd be able to play it on this field. We do also want to overlay a softball, girl softball slash Little League field on that as well. So if the high school needed to play a game over there, they'd be able to do that. If the Little Leagues needed to play a game, they'd be able to do that. And then one of the biggest parts of this project would be to install lights around the field as well. You know, we've identified this location as one of the best spots in town because of accessibility to downtown area, its accessibility to I-95 for hosting tournaments. And then the fact that we would also have Ludlow High School's turf field on the same complex and Tomlinson's turf field less than a quarter of a mile down the road. It does make for a pretty complete athletic complex. Again, happy to take any questions that you guys might have.
All right, thank you, Mr. Calabrese. Questions from board members? Ms. Marmian?
Thank you. I just wanted to know how long, what's the, what's the life of this turf field projected to be?
Typical turf fields do last between 10 and 12 years depending on usage. They cut this one, these ones rarely, or pretty much are coming with eight-year warranties right now. So a little less than their full life expectancy. But, you know, we did just replace the other three turf fields that we have in town in 15, 16, and 17, all to the tune of about, between $400,000 and $500,000 each. One field you normally, you used to be able to get for about a million, million and a half. And then, like I said, it's about $500,000 or so to replace.
So you pay the initial upfront costs of, which is quite a lot of money, four million, but then when you replace it, you're just replacing the top layer? Is that correct? Because you've laid down a foundation of sorts. So maintaining it beyond its life is less expensive once you make the initial investment. Is that correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Ms. Leclerc?
Once, and Sheila just mentioned it, with the maintenance, how does that compare to maintaining a grass field? Is the cost to replace the pellets and fluff it up periodically about the same or in the same ballpark as to maintain a grass field? Or is there an added cost to it?
No, very, there's very minimal maintenance that you have to do during the actual year. It needs to be swept quarterly. So every three or four months, we do sweep them with an actual broom that gets dragged behind one of the data machines. Outside of that, there's no other maintenance with the type of turf fields that we use here in town. So it is obviously cost efficient, but you are paying more money upfront as Ms. Marmian pointed out. A typical grass field here in town, and I, we just went out to bid on our field contract, so I can confidently say, you know, runs us about $60,000 a year for a field or just maintenance. That's linings, groomings, mowings. That is not, you know, when you have to lay new sod down the middle of a field or you replace an entire grass field. When we redid Ludlow Middle School, the field we're talking about right now, back in 2017, when it was destroyed during an unauthorized lacrosse tournament, that was to the tune of $150,000 just to lay the sod.
And then my other question is, my kids went through Ludlow High School and Middle, and so I know the property pretty well, and I also live in the neighborhood. That field gets very wet and especially like towards the back corner. So as a turf field, are you going to raise it up at all or what will happen to it if it gets, continues to get wet?
So this would include drainage. So they would take all the drainage into consideration when building this field. And we wouldn't have any issues with that. The field wouldn't be wet. It would drain.
Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Mr. Curly?
Yep, thank you, Madam Chair. Anthony, great to see you. Glad that this project has made its way back through the approval process. Think this is long overdue. You mentioned this was, this project's shovel ready. Could you get it, could you give us a little bit more detail on expected timing, start, duration, completion, when it's available?
Absolutely. Since we missed the window here for this summer, most of the turf field installers are typically bidding their projects in January and February to line up projects during the summer when kids are out of school. So what I would want to do here, since we are already at May, is try to get this one to start construction probably at the tail end of the summer, which closer to September, maybe early October. So yes, this would interfere with the school year. Luckily, again, being on this complex, the middle school would be affected as far as their PE classes, but they do have access to the high school turf field. And unfortunately, I could say that they do have experience having to shuffle things up there because again, this field was out of commission for some time, a few years ago. The project does take between three and four months. Again, if we're starting this in the fall, we would like to hopefully get it done in December. Obviously, if the snow comes a little sooner, you know, there may be some final touches that need to be done in the early spring. But if we can start it again in September, October, we can get this field open by the spring season, which is in April.
Great. Thank you, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Curly. Other questions from the board? Mr. Testane?
Hey, Anthony, how are you? Good to see you.
Sorry, not well.
You okay? Just quick, a couple of things. Number one, who's doing the turf fields? Who, like what company would be installing them?
So, yeah, so we put these, these projects out to bid. Obviously, anything over the bidding threshold would go out to bid. So.
Who's done them in the past?
In the past, we've actually had Sprint Turf has done a couple, and I believe, and I believe Field Turf did one for us.
I think the Spin Turf is more recent.
Sprint Turf, yeah.
They were the most recent. Municipal experience. I'm not familiar with who they are. Just curious, the trust involved just seems, I mean, I believe there is a need for the, for the turf fields. It just seems to be a lot for two fields. And if I heard you correctly at the beginning, and I know I've read through the information, one of them is a multi-use field, I believe you said. So when you're talking about square footage, you know, typically lacrosse fields are like somewhere in the vicinity of 110 yards roughly. Is there more yardage than that in one of these fields? Is, I'm trying to, give me an idea of how much we're talking about in the way of the price per square foot that you're anticipating for, I guess it would be a larger field. Is that safe to say for the multi-use one?
Well, the multi, yeah, the multi-use field is exactly that. I believe a lacrosse field might have the widest dimensions of any of the sports that are played on a multipurpose field. So yes, you have that larger sized field, but again, this is like a field and a half. It's not, it's not fully two fields side by side back there. And you can't fit two football fields or two lacrosse fields. You can fit this multipurpose field and then you can have a smaller, like 40-yard practice field. What we're thinking is we're going to put that practice field, but also overlay a softball field on it, which would give us this, this turf space that could be also, that could be used for, whether it's Little League baseball or softball or even, it wouldn't necessarily be a miracle field because that's a brand. But we would, we would have access for our challenger baseball teams to play on this as well. So the Fairfield Storm would essentially have a home field here. They play their games at Mill Hill right now. But this would be a nice amenity for the town to offer.
No, it's great. And how have the fields, I know over time, I'm sure they've improved in terms of their, the way that they're constructed back from, you know, earlier years where, you know, it's all tires that basically made up of turf fields, right? So I know that that's progressed. I think we may have had one or perhaps two emails with concerns over, you know, some of the materials that go into the turf fields. So I'm just trying to get an idea from you as to what you think has changed as far as the improvements in the quality of the fields themselves.
Yep, so most, most companies are not offering the recycled tire crumb rubber anymore. Most of them are using, if you're using crumb rubber, you're using a virgin crumb rubber. What we'd be using is an encapsulated crumb rubber. That's what we've used on our other three fields. So supposedly, it's the safest of any of the crumb rubber type material, infill material. There are other options to go with an organic infill, you know, coconut husk or something of that nature. Unfortunately, when you start going into the organics, you start obviously incurring more costs. Almost a third of what you're currently, what we're currently looking at. And then you have to install irrigation, which kind of defeats the whole purpose of a turf field. When you install the irrigation and a coconut husk field, then you have to maintain a certain moisture. You, you know, if it gets too cold, it freezes. You can't play. If it is too dry, you've got to water it. So again, just, there's a lot of added expenses to it. So, you know, we're trying to stay with the same type of turf that we've been putting around town. You know, the three types that we have are all the same right now, the two high schools and the middle schools, so.
And I think if I'm, they're more like pellets, right, that make up the?
Yeah, yeah. They are. And, you know, some of them come with a cushion underneath, some don't. Just depends on the type of infill you're using. You know, shock pads, so.
You've priced it up before. Is it the price per square foot?
It is.
That you typically get from like, let's say, a spin turf if they are awarded the bid?
Correct. It's typically a price per square foot. And then, you know, depending on the lines and how difficult your site is, you know, for site work and stuff.
Okay, that's great. Thank you much. Great, great job as always. Good to see you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those questions, Mr. Testane. Mr. Walsh?
Good evening, Mr. Calabrese.
Good evening.
Couple of questions. So the field, it's going to be lighted, correct? Both of them?
That's correct.
Okay. And have you started talking to the neighbors about that?
I have not talked to the four houses that live across the street.
Is it going to only be the four? Or you think there's going to be more? Have you talked to anybody from the zoning department?
No, I haven't talked to the zoning department. Again, we don't need to notice anything over there. We can, as a courtesy, notice the four neighbors that live across the street. Again, I looked at the maps. There are four houses across the street on Unclea Road that are adjacent to I-95. The road behind that paper mill is, is far enough away that no lights would. I don't think they'd see the lights from where they are. There's enough tree, tree cover between the sites.
You don't think you'll see the lights from Paper Mill? The glowing of those lights?
Not with, not with today's technology on lights. I don't think they would.
Okay. They're going to be LED lights, correct?
That would be our first option, yes. That would be our first option, yes.
What's the second option?
Whatever comes in the bid. I have, we haven't designed the the specs yet. So, you know, we've got to put out an RFP for design on this and that would be, you know, up to the design company that would do that for us.
If you haven't designed the specs, how do we know the price is accurate at four point one two five million?
Because I've contacted the two companies that do these projects and asked them to price this out for me.
With the lights?
With the lights, correct. So each each company provided a like contingency in there for me.
Okay. On the reliability of costs under number four, we're kind of used to seeing like the reliability based on a scale of one to ten. You don't give that. The way you write it up, it makes it seem like the reliability is ten out of ten. Would that be your number?
I would say my number is probably like an eight and a half to a nine out of ten.
Okay.
And again, I think the whole point of my hesitancy on saying it's not a ten is just the fact that inflation right now, and I think several board members have brought that up tonight. I did build in a fifteen percent contingency in here, which is rather large. But, you know, again, that I've been sitting on this for a few years now, so.
No, that's fair with the building and a contingency for for inflation. And and you haven't had a price down in two years. Is that correct?
Well, I got the most recent prices back in, I think, November. So, but yes.
Okay. My other question goes to the trying to figure out what the number, the exact point is. The additional like long range costs under number six. So there's going to be lights. What's the additional cost of lights going to cost the town of Fairfield? And whose budget that can hit? Is that hitting your budget or is that hitting someone else's budget for that electricity?
No, we'd have to build this into the Parks and Rec budget, just like we do with our other fields.
Is, do you have an estimate on what that will be per year? Based on the amount of usage you think it's going to get of these five hundred and fifty hours or something like that?
I don't have it off the top of my head, but I can, I can get that number for you.
Okay, that'd be helpful. Thank you. And I saw that you said that there's a warranty for about eight years?
Yep.
When this, after the ten year useful life, when you say replacement, I presume it's not another four and a half million dollars because we have the lights there, correct? So that's probably just bulbs and things like that. But are you talking about a whole new like field, like carpet? But, you know, what do we, what do we be looking at as a percentage of what the replacement is at the end of the ten year useful life?
It's about a third. So, you know, and if I was estimating off the top of my head, you know, what we were going to be, again, this is ten years from now, twelve years from now, I would say it's probably going to be about a million and five to replace the whole carpet. And I'm using, I'm saying carpet, that's not even, that's not the best terminology to use, but essentially that's what we're replacing.
Okay, because all the drainage is there. Everything's like there and whatever. So it's really, I like the word carpet, too. I know it's probably not the proper term, but I know what you mean when you say it. And then all the crumb rubber gets replaced at that point in time. Is that generally correct?
That's correct, yes.
Okay. So, you know, I definitely believe that the town needs this field based on our inventory. And I know there's an organization in town that I know has been in contact with you. And they're talking about spending like, you know, paying for these like at fifty percent of the cost for future fields. Is that still correct?
They would like to contribute to the next turf field. You know, once the, once the town, they're basically looking for the town to come up with an agreement with them and they're willing to bring funds to the table going forward.
Okay, does that agreement entail control over those fields?
No.
Does it include pay for play for our players?
There are, everybody already pays for play. It might, it might include, it might potentially have to include an increase in pay for play. But right now, everybody is paying for play.
If the public school, is the public school allowed to use this field?
Yes, just like all the rest of our facilities, they do use.
Okay, so do the public school students going to have to pay for play?
The public schools do not pay for play. But all the other recreational programs, whether it's youth or adult, do pay for play.
Yeah, that I understand. I was just, I was getting confused because I was, I thought you might be saying that the public schools would have to pay for play, which has not been the case. Okay, thank you very much for the information and for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Testane?
Yeah, I just had a quick question and you may have answered this previously, so I apologize ahead of time. But since this is on Board of Ed property, is there any reimbursement along those lines at all?
No, we we manage this property here from the town.
Town, yeah.
The only property we don't manage are the the two high school fields.
When you say you don't manage, you're talking about the Board of Ed manages those properties?
Correct. It handles the maintenance of them.
So just to follow up, if this, if these fields had been on the high school property, you're saying that, oh, if the Board of Ed had requested it, let's say, the addition of a turf field, it could have been reimbursed. Is that, am I following that logic correctly?
I'm not saying that. I'm just saying if this field was going to be at Ward High School on their property, I wouldn't be sitting here requesting the money. Angeles would be.
No, I got it. Okay, that's fine. Thank you. But I'm good. Thanks, Anthony.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Testane. Other questions? Mr. Curley?
Yep. Thank you, Madam Chair and Anthony. I think this will be quick, but there were some good questions tonight, just trying to understand how the use of the field will be divided up. But I guess in in general terms, is the policy for use going to be the same after as it is before? Well, we're really just talking about changing out the the hardscape here and 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 potentially saving on maintenance. But in terms of who uses it and the policies for who has access to it, it's all going to be the same, right?
That that is our intent. Yeah, the policies would stay the same. The, I guess, I don't want to say the exception or, you know, the the benefit here is going to be, you know, in November, when it's dark at four thirty, you know, rec will still be able to come on the field at, you know, four thirty-five o'clock. And now they'll actually be able to have a practice as opposed to having to go home.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Curley. Other questions? Mr. Stark?
I think you're going to get your field, but I'm going to go on the record opposing this because I think that the Fairfield Athletic Foundation should have put some amount into this field, not not just the next one. I think this is a nice to have more than a need. And I am very concerned about the must haves that are are coming our way, particularly on the environmental front. I don't see in the waterfall where we're dealing with Rooster River flooding. And you may remember, we approved a a study on beach area flooding. And depending on how that study goes, we were told that there could be tens of millions of dollars of expenses there. And I'm not trying to convince anyone here and I'm not trying to criticize anyone for voting in support of it. I know it's going to be a crown jewel for the town of Fairfield, but I just felt I needed to lay that out there. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Other questions? Okay, seeing none, I'd like to put this item to a vote. So can I have a motion to adopt the bond resolution as written in item eleven? Ms. Marmian, seconded by Mr. Curley, all in favor? Aye, opposed? All right, thank you. The motion passes eight, one, zero. Thank you, Mr. Calabrese.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
All right, have a. Okay, so we are going to move on to item twelve. To hear, consider and adopt a bond resolution entitled a resolution appropriating twenty-two million seven oh one four forty-three for the costs associated with phase one of the air conditioning upgrade project at various schools, authorizing grants to reimburse one million one hundred and sixteen, three hundred and twenty dollars of such appropriation and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. The backup for this item is on page five hundred and five. That is the bond resolution. And the remaining backup with the cost estimates, et cetera, is begins on page five oh nine. Welcome, Angeles. Thank you for being here in person. Thank you for waiting patiently. Welcome, Ms. Vitale. So happy to have you here.
Happy to be here as, you know, on this side of the table.
Good evening, everyone. So as I'm sure you're all aware, during COVID, the Board of Education came together and said that it would be a good idea to move forwards with adding air conditioning to the buildings that currently do not have air conditioning. I want to preface that with, we talk about air conditioning. We're calling this building, this project and air conditioning the buildings. But I think it's very important to point out that we're not just looking to make comfortable buildings for the students, even though that will be a priority. We're looking at indoor air quality. We live in New England. We have hot, humid summers. We get humid buildings that aren't air conditioned. We bring in outside air through our DOAS systems. So we're bringing that hot, humid air into the buildings. And when you get hot, humid air in buildings, you end up with mold or indoor air quality issues. So we've looked at that. We've come up with a plan. The, actually, I should say, the Board of Education has charged us with coming up with a plan to add the air conditioning and improve the indoor air quality of the buildings. What you're looking at tonight is a phase one of that plan. And just to give you a brief history, as you know, we are asking for the twenty-two million. But that is typical of any of our large construction projects. For instance, Mill Hill, which is just finishing, we ask for the upfront costs or the approval of the upfront costs of the project because the state, in order for them to accept it as a project and potentially reimburse it, they want to see the commitment from the town upfront. That being said, I know a couple of the questions that came up tonight on other projects are how comfortable are we with the numbers? We we hired a company, DTC, who went out and did conceptual estimates for all of our buildings. They took a close look at our buildings, not only to add air conditioning and the equipment needed to add air conditioning, but they also looked at stuff like the power coming into the building, whether it would support or need to be upgraded. We looked at sprinkler systems, whether they would be need to be modified to meet ductwork configurations. Also, in our numbers, we added in if, for instance, if we do have to drop a ceiling to put ductwork in, we would include putting in the modified sprinkler systems or upgrading or putting in a sprinkler system at that time. We wouldn't, we felt it wouldn't be vital to drop a ceiling, an entire building to run ductwork just to put back the existing ceiling without adding a sprinkler system to the building. That being said, the other things we looked at are we're going to be adding costs for power for running these types of things. So again, if we're dropping a ceiling, we're going to put up LED lights as opposed to putting up the existing lights in the system. That's kind of a brief overview. What you saw in your fourteen points in your backup was the three sites that were chosen are Fairfield Woods Middle School, which would bring it up to the standard of the other two middle schools, with the exception of Tomlinson, who will still have a small portion of the building that is not air conditioned. And the two elementary schools you see in there would bring the the elementary schools up to being air conditioned, with the exception of Dwight and Jennings, because those two buildings are on the waterfall chart down the road to had have a larger projects done, at which time the air conditioning would be added to those buildings as well. I think that's kind of where I have. And if you open up any questions or Ms. Vitale?
Just wanted to reiterate the board's support for this. Air conditioning was on our capital waterfall. At first, it was spread out over ten years after the last two years with COVID and just learning more about seeing what some of our neighbors went through and what we've gone through here with mold and the effect that it has on the building itself. We thought it was important to fast track it for the health and safety of all of those in the building, as well as for the structure itself. As Mr. Papa George said, we hired a company to go out and do studies of all of our buildings. That was funded through the operating budget. So I thank this board for their support of that, just to give us, you know, some more, you know, really, an idea of what it actually costs after years of just assuming that it wasn't feasible. Now that we have the numbers, we can plan for it. The board wanted to fast track it. Doing it within five to seven year timeframe brought it down to around seventy-five million dollars as opposed to a hundred million dollars if we were looking at the ten years. We do appreciate that. We'll have to look at the waterfall. You know, we had a conversation, as Mr. Schmidt said, about staying within the bonding capacity. So Mr. Papa George is looking at the cash flow of upcoming projects. So we factor them in moving forward. The Board of Ed has recently reinstated its facilities committee to be working at this, looking at our waterfall moving forward, developing our next five year plan, capital plan for the Board of Ed to work into our district improvement plan. Mr. Asa and I, Mr. Papa George, are working on the capital planning workshop with Mr. Walsh and Ms. Charlton from your board, just to kind of move it forward. And I think that that really is where we are right now. And I thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you to both of you. I wonder, Mr. Papa George, before we open it up to the board for questions, can you just quickly summarize the cash flow on this project? So we have a twenty-two million dollar authorization before us. I think, I think it was Mr. Curley had asked the question before. Can you just walk us through? You know, we know there's the piece this year, but just walk us through the the projection and how the how the cash flow plays out, maybe point us to. Maybe if you tell me the the title of the page, I can, I can guide everyone to the page in the backup because I'm on the PDF.
So the the title on the chart was, it says district, district air conditioning upgrade projects, phase one through five cash flow. And the breakdown was in the twenty-two, twenty-three year, we were estimating a cost of two point two million, taking into account the available money from the grants from the town and the Board of Ed. It brought that number down to one point one million. And this is, if you're used to our typical larger projects, this would really, we would consider this what we have always called in the past the seed money to get this project started, to get an engineer on board and to get going with schematic designs and upgrades. Over the next few.
I'm sorry, just just for, I didn't mean to interrupt you. For reference, everyone, if you're on the PDF, it is on page five twenty-one. Sorry about that, Mr. Papa George. Please go ahead.
No problem. So what what you, what this chart also breaks out is the next few years with the twenty-three, I'm sorry, thirteen million point one next year, ten point eight the year after. And that would take care of completing out phase one. Also, in next year's number of thirteen includes the seed money for the phase two project. And then moving on, you'll have the ten million and the ten, ten point eight and ten point four, which completes the first number, ten completes the phase one project and the second ten completes the second phase project of this. We we broke it out, like I mentioned, the three, the first phase is the three buildings. The second phase is the Tomlinson upgrade. And then the larger two projects, the two high schools are down the road a little bit further and they're broken out over a few years to break out the cash flow on those projects.
Thank you for walking us through that. And and it's helpful to have all this in front of us. I just want to make sure tonight, we're only, the motion before us is only on this this first one. I think it's helpful that you laid all of this out and we we appreciate you doing that. Obviously, this this project, once we authorize it, the cash flow goes over three years, but we we are being asked to authorize the twenty-two million. And and there will be more after this. The these amounts, I'm just glancing back at Mr. Schmidt's initial schedule. So just for the board's reference, the allocation for the Board of Ed before any contingency is allocated, and there's a lot of contingency which will ultimately get allocated through, is twelve point five million for the Board of Ed. So you can kind of just compare that to, you know, the numbers that are that are here on this schedule. So thank you again. Questions from the board? Mr. Duette?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Question, I read the fourteen points and question on the. Question, uh, I read the fourteen points and um, question on the what's the word I'm looking for? I guess the infrastructure changes. So you're at a school, you take down all the ceiling tiles, and you're like, oh, there's no there's no um, water protect, you know, no fire protection system. Let's put a fire protection in. Oh, we took down the ceiling tiles, let's put new ceiling tiles up. Is that completely at the discretion of your department, Mr. Papa George? Or will you go back to the Board of Ed with an estimate, or is this just a foregone conclusion that this is going to happen?
So as part of the conceptual budget numbers that we have before us, those were anticipated, those types of projects were anticipated. Yes, I have the same concern that you, that this could just start growing and growing, growing. And we will have to keep an eye on that and make sure it doesn't. As far as making that decision, it would not be myself or my department and not the Board of Education. Uh, we plan on intending, we intend to turn this project over to a building committee, just like we do with any other large project and for school buildings. So the, the first select woman would appoint a chair of the building committee, and the building committee would take the lead on what would move forwards or not. Based on the ed specs that will go before the Board of Education and the first, this board of selectmen.
Okay, great. Um, on your overview, and I've got the old backup, so I'm on page sixty-two. But it says, it said Fairfield Public Schools Long-Term Facilities Plan, which details out to twenty-two, seven oh one. I only see a ten percent contingency in here, which I got to tell you, seems really small, based on the fact that we're opening up schools. There's, you know, we're talking about North Stratfield School, which I love, deep in my heart, because my kids went there, it's right in my neighborhood. But boy, I just can see us going into that school and finding the A-word and all the other stuff. I don't even want to say it out loud, right? So it, do you, do you think ten percent is really enough for this?
We did feel ten percent contingency at this time was a good number to carry. We also escalated these kind of slightly higher than we normally would because of current market values and the way it's unsettled at this point. So again, and I would consider this number to be a, an estimated number based on our engineers' reports. Uh, once this goes to a building committee and we I'll step back from it. One of the things that we've always done is we've asked for seed money, and before we even have conceptual designs, we're asking for the total money, money for the project. So it's a little bit backwards, but it's the way we're required to do it. So once we get to a building committee with conceptual designs, will they, they may come before you and say this twenty-two million is really only twenty million, or it could be twenty-three. So we do ask for the money, but there is the potential for a building committee to come back and say, we need to adjust that number. That's why we don't bond the total amount, we only bond the seed money at the front of the project.
Right, and yes, and that's, that's a press, I mean, we've, this is something we've adopted years ago, so this is not unheard of, so, and I appreciate it. We got a, we got a, an email today from a taxpayer asking about North Stratfields. And North Stratfield is in the long-term plan to be really renovated, right? So this taxpayer's concern, if I can paraphrase, is that while you're putting air conditioning in North Stratfield, and then two years later, or whatever the timeframe is, you're just going to rip the school open anyway. So has there been consideration that that's, this will be integrated in a way where it doesn't, you know, interfere maybe with the, you know, the expansion or whatever happens with North Stratfield?
We always keep that in mind when doing large projects at buildings, but I can tell you that on the current ten-year facilities plan, North Stratfield does not have a project on there. Uh, Dwight does and Jennings does. And that's why they're not listed as schools being done in any of the phases.
Perfect. That's, that's a great answer. That's a great answer. And my last point, I'm sorry, I'm abusing the floor here. Um, building committee. I love them, they do yeoman's work, but I have to tell you, we've, we've had some great ones and we've had some bad ones. And I'd feel a lot better if this might not be run by town folk, if you ask me. You know, maybe, I think we need to have maybe a little more rigor around this particular building committee, because you know, the more I'm hearing about this, this is, this is a big project to start with, but the, the building committee, right, yeah. You know, somebody's going to look up there and say, oh, it'd be a good idea to do something else while I'm at the ceilings, you know? So I, I just ask for that consideration maybe of the board to consider how the building committee might be formed.
Absolutely, and as I'm sure you know, unfortunately, I shouldn't say unfortunately, the, the building committee is appointed by the selectman, not by us or the Board of Education. Uh, we do have a construction manager who works very closely with them, and we will continue to have that practice. But um, something to point out is state policy is that we are going to apply for reimbursement for this project. We will need a building committee to be there.
Great, thank you for that.
I just want to clarify that right now, this project may or may not be up for reimbursement. Uh, Mr. Papa George did check with the state, and at first they were, they were telling us the standalone air conditioning projects would not be up for reimbursement. We did run into this in the past with Sherman. They said no. We went back, and then they said yes. The first selectwoman reached out then and helped move the process along. I believe that she's reached out again at the state level just to um, you know, advocate for us. We also, the state, um, excuse me, the um, board leadership met with the state delegation at the end of January, told us, told them that it was a priority for us and hoping to just get um, some things moving there. You may have heard that there's also the potential of the governor accessing some of the federal grant money for air quality. There's been a lot of discussion up there with air quality bills, so it's, it's definitely on the radar in Hartford. The fact that we are, have gone through and analyzed all of our schools and have an idea of the need, have designed, you know, rudimentary designs, conceptual designs for these buildings, I think puts us in a step ahead of some other districts that might also be vying for this funding. Not a promise, but just, just to give you, just be transparent about where we are, are in terms of the state. Mr. Puppet George and Mr. Marbido actually met with representatives of the state just to give them, you know, a background of where we, where we've gone in terms of getting information on moving these projects forward. I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Duett. Uh, Mr. Testani.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Um, speaking of the state, we through our chair received a, an email from our, one of the state legislatures, Christine McCarthy-Wehe back on March first, saying Governor Lamont proposes establishing a grant program to fund HVAC upgrades in public schools. That was March first. So I don't, personally, I don't see how I, how any of us could vote for this until we know for sure. A, whether or not that's been approved. B, could it, if it hasn't been approved, which I don't think it has, because it's near the session end for the state legislature, but if it's not, is, could there be a special session involved? I mean, if the governor is proposing that all the schools be uh, given this grant program, I, I don't see how we can move forward with allocating this money. It's my, my own opinion, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Testani.
I mean, I think that that is actually one of the reasons why we're asking you to approve the full amount, so we can move, so we're set to apply for any grant, should they be available. If there was any reimbursed reimbursement or any grants that we did get access to, it would of course be applied to the project. And, you know, this one point, whatever it is right now, it's before you. You know, we're asking you to move that forward, and then if grants become available, it could be put towards this year or just moving the project forward over the next three years.
Have you received any feedback from the same state legislature? Again, this was March first. We're, we're in the middle of May, and again, again, I believe we're at close to, if not at, the legislative end. So has this passed? Is it nearing bill passage? Is there any correspondence with the, with the state representative that is referenced in this email?
When we met with the state legislation, they did tell us the same thing. Um, we continue to monitor.
What do you say told us the same thing? What are you referring to?
That the governor was planning to put forth some type of bill to allow for some grant money for air conditioning.
When was that? So that, that was January, so this is March, right? So you're saying you haven't communicated with them since January, is that?
We continue to monitor what's coming out of the legislation, and we have not heard anything about a specific approval of grants yet.
So, okay, so when you say continue to monitor, you're speaking of corresponding with the state delegation?
Uh, I do not personally speak with them. We do have grant, we have a grant writer in our office who continuously checks with the state for what's available and what we can apply for.
And I'm sorry, the last time.
I don't have that date, but I can get it.
Yeah, I'd like to get that, and also get an update as to where this is in the, I mean, this was pretty bold headlines about this potential grant program funding from Governor Lamont, so. Get an update on that.
Yeah, Miss, thank you, Mr. Testani. If I could, and maybe I'm not thinking of this correctly, I thought I heard that there had been a pot of money allocated, and it was not huge. It, it seemed to me that it was, you know, it was, it was not, certainly not going to cover every district in the state. I mean, I don't want, for some reason, I have ninety million.
I think I have ninety million also, and have been, you know, we put this out there, we met with, um, you know, the full state delegation. They know it's on our radar. They know that we've been moving this project forward, you know, checking in with them. They've gotten similar just information that they hear that there's this pot of money, um, you know, but nothing in terms of applications for school districts right now. Still trying to, I guess, build what that's going to look like. Part of the reason why I think they met with, with us is that we had um, had gotten further along in the process. We actually were provided some, run a fact-finding mission as they were trying to build, I think, how to um, allow other districts to apply for this money. So right now, it's still, I think, a headline, um, and nothing has really moved forward to the districts. Haven't heard anything, discussions through, through Cabe and through CES and through other districts that we hear talk about it, but nothing has come forward at this time, but, you know, we'll keep on monitoring it and bring it to this board if we hear any more conclusive information.
Is it a matter, I'm sorry, is it a matter of we just have, we have to apply and we haven't applied yet, or there, we don't know if there's, okay. It's not, okay, because I, as I said, I, and it's a good question, we, we can, we should follow up. Because I, I could have sworn, and Mr. Matola seems to remember the ninety million too. I thought I remembered that there was a pot of money, and I don't know.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Is that ninety million is in that same email?
It is it? Okay, I'm sorry, yeah. So I, I don't know what the form of that was, if it was set aside in, in the state bonding or whatever, but.
Madam Chair, I think we should table this until we get some kind of definition from the state legislative body about where this bill is and if it has been approved, or if it will be approved. So I'd like to make a motion to table to a date certain. Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Testani has made a motion to table this. Is there a make sure I do this right, second?
I would, yeah, actually, I'm not sure if I'm saying, if I said it right to a date certain, because I don't know what the date, the date is though, right? Uh, yeah, perhaps by the, let's say the next meeting, the next June meeting.
Okay, so let me, uh, let me just double, bear with me for a moment. I think that meeting is on June fourth, but I'm going to check. So the next Board of Finance meeting is on June seventh. So do you want to go ahead and make that motion?
Thank you, so apologies for not wording that correctly. I'm usually better than that, thank you.
All right, so do we have a second for that motion? Uh, Mr. Walsh, okay, all in favor? Do you want to have a discussion here?
Yeah, so, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, so.
I'm chaired by Robert Schules. There is no discussion.
I was going to say, yeah, you're right, you're right. So let's just vote on that motion. Do we have a, uh, all in favor for motions table? Uh, Mr. Walsh, Mr. Testani, okay, opposed. Uh, Mr. Duett, Ms. Leclerc, Ms. Marmian, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola. Okay, thank you. So the motion fails. Ms. Marmian, you have a comment? No question? Okay. Um, thank you, Mr. Testani. Um, questions on the motion? Mr. Stark?
I just did a little online research while we were sitting here. Governor Lamont put out the press release proposing the ninety million on March first. And then if you look at the news from yesterday, a seventy-five million dollar grant was approved by the state legislature for that purpose.
Thank you, Mr. Stark. Helpful. Okay, so seventy-five million it is, and that's up for grabs, and we are yeah, yeah. Well, can well, people have to apply for it first, so I, I understand you're saying that we are, we are yeah, okay.
Again, Madam Chair, it goes to my point of why we're continuing to, to review a motion for an allocated amount of dollars when we don't know what the town could or could not receive. From what I believe Mr. Stark said was seventy million, is that right? Seventy-five, thank you, Kevin. Mr. Stark, excuse me.
Yeah, and I, and I guess, um, as I saw this presented, there was not an assumption that we would, like, you are asking that we go forward with this regardless of whether there is state funding available. Do I have that right? So to the extent we have a grant available, it would, like our other projects, reduce the amount of bonding we ultimately do. But we would be authorizing the full amount, and uh, if we don't get the bonding, we would be ultimately funding the full amount. Is that correct? Okay, okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, Mr.? Thank you, Mr. Testani. Okay. Um, Ms. Marmian?
I have a question on a different issue, so does anybody have any other comments on this issue? No, we're good. So I have a question just in terms of the air quality with air conditioning. So when the kids are not in school, let's say during, you know, July, August, air can, the school will be air conditioned to maintain the quality?
So when this, when our schools are unoccupied or there's no one in the buildings, we do, we run them in an unoccupied mode. So they don't keep it as standard temperature as when there's people in the building, but we do keep them conditioned so that we are not having mold issues or we've had, we've actually in years past have attempted to shut off air conditioning in parts of buildings, and it was a very poor decision made because it ended up costing us to clean up mold and other issues in the buildings.
That's what, that's what I thought. Um, and so my other question is in terms of the, the cost to air condition the buildings in those summer months. I mean, with the cost of, of cost of energy these days. I mean, that's got to be a real concern in terms of um, utility costs for the district. And I'm, I'm wondering if that's been taken into account, or if you have, you know, estimates or how much it would cost to, to air condition these schools, even in the unoccupied mode.
That's a great question. It came up at the Board of Selectment as well. I was asked to put in an estimated number on the, how much would we cost to add this conditioning to the buildings and what it was going to cost to run it through the years. My answer to them, and I'll do the same here, is I, I wouldn't even want to put a number on that until we actually start looking at what type of equipment. So once we get a little further down in this, and we start getting some schematic designs of what type of equipment and what direction they're going to go, there's multiple ways we can go with uh, air conditioning buildings. We could go with what's called a cassette system, which is kind of, we have a rooftop unit, kind of like you have at your house. You have a condenser outside which runs to air handler inside, and it does that. Or there's other types like a rooftop unit where we're, we're condensing and cooling the air on the roof and then ducting it in through the building. So there's multiple ways to go, which would determine cost of running the equipment. So I wouldn't want to put a number on that until we knew more of what direction we were going to go.
Thank you, that makes sense. But just as a follow-up to that, so you don't know exactly what systems you're going to use, but you do have an amount that you're giving to us for bonding, and if so, what is that based on?
Uh, that was based on uh, looking at the buildings. Like I mentioned, we had DTC engineering come in and look at the buildings. And that, their schematic, their schematic was based on a specific type. And again, we escalated based on, we may decide to go with a different type of system and also uh, took into account the building, the building. So if you have like a three-story building, they didn't look at a rooftop unit, they looked at more of a cassette split system. So they took all that into account when they were doing, coming up with their conceptual designs for it.
Thank you, Ms. Marmian. Mr. Walsh?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Um, following up on Ms. Marmian's question, you've proposed to us numbers, and that was based, you said, on a certain system. I would like to know the energy savings from that system, so I want you to get me those. If it was good enough for you guys to give us an estimate on how much it would cost, I think you have the, have the ability and you should produce what it's going to cost for that system. And if you change that, we'll ask you what, why. And if you change that, we'll ask you what, why you changed it, I guess, and then what the energy save, what the energy costs are going to be for that system.
The board is, we don't have the exact numbers. We are anticipating that we're going to have to be budgeting more for utilities for air conditioning. Some of the increased costs for running air conditioning might be offset by the changing, the upgrades in the other mechanicals. So it could be offset. I mean, we have seen in buildings that we've done, the LED light upgrades have seen benefit on our electricity bill going down, so.
Okay. I guess this question is really from Mr. Papa George. So, you know, myself, I mean, there's a number of people in this room who are on the First Select Woman's. It's not a committee, it's a group. We're a group, we're a group.
Working group.
We're a group, which means we don't vote on anything. We don't really, we kind of sit there and listen more than we do anything. It's kind of odd, but it is what it is. But in our group, when we talk about this, and when we last had our last meeting, which I think was on April 25th on a Monday, you presented kind of a version of page 521 in the posted backup. And some of the numbers were not correct and some of the formulas, that's not a problem. But I guess the question was, I had asked you to produce that same document showing all the other projects, the non-air-conditioned projects that you have in your waterfall and that you presented to us in January, I believe. And is that ready? Because I've not seen it. I asked Jared for it today. Is that in the backup?
It is not in the backup currently.
I thought Jared said it was and I don't see it in here.
No.
Right, Jared, you told me today when I asked you that it was in here.
Is, is there a page we should refer to? Yeah, so it's, this is, it's entitled Fairfield Public Schools Ten Year Waterfall?
Yeah, so that's our current waterfall chart that's available that you've, you've seen before. You saw it at the, and, but what we are working on doing, because that shows total project costs and what you had asked at the meeting was for us to break out the cash flow.
Cash flow.
Per year on that. So we did take and import all of this cash, all of these projects into that cash flow sheet. We're currently working it through whether we can break it out over cash flow, whether it's a single year project, a multi-year project. There was some question going back and forth within my department, so I am working on getting that to you.
Okay.
I don't want you to think I wasn't getting it.
No, because I, you know, part of a statement, not a question, I guess, is if it's the Board of Ed's priority to do these three schools, I'm fine with it as long as it also fits in with the administration's numbers of giving you 12,500 a year, allowing maybe a year to be less, but another year to be more. And so I, I need to see that sheet because I think it's going to blast out these numbers. Today, you guys are going to have to really make some tough decisions on two different schools that need to be done, on all your roofing projects that are in there. And I don't see how you don't do a roofing project. I really don't. Like, you could determine not to do an elementary school or figure some way out to consolidate or, you know, that's all decisions you have to make and I don't want to really take this meeting in any of that, that way. But I will tell you as being a member of that committee that it is concerning me. And you want to put your, your funds towards these three air conditioning projects? I'm fine with it. That's your priority and that's your board's priority and I presume that that is the priority. But I guess I was a little surprised and I just want you to ask, give me the reasoning of why, I was expecting, I don't know, I don't know what our chairwoman who's on the committee was thinking, but I left that meeting thinking that we were probably going to be getting some authorization for the upfront study, right? Or the architectural fees, engineering fees, whatever the HVAC company. This 2,270,145, so 2. almost $3 million. And it was detailed on what grant money you have from ARPA and ARPESA and what we'd have to spend. So that's really what I expected in the agenda. So I have to admit, I was extremely surprised, would be the nicest word I could put out there, the whole 22,700 was part of the agenda. And I understand, and I will say that I, I agree with our chairwoman. We did talk at our committee that, you know, once we spend the 22.7, I mean, the 2,270, I guess we're, we're all saying, I guess, we want to do the project. But my concern is that these are old buildings where some of this air conditioning is going into. It's not like easy, this is not like an easy, like, you know, I'm building a new building and an architect builds on where, where everything's going to go. So I'm concerned that there's a possibility, and we won't know this until all that money spent, the 2.3 million dollars, that they find stuff. The A word is Mr. DeWitt called it earlier. Let's just call it, say it's asbestos or some other things. And now the project turns out not to be 22.7. It turns into be, I'm just going to throw a round number here, I'm not trying to scare anybody, I'm just saying $30 million because of all things that need to be done. And I presume the board would step back and say, at that point, we only have limited funds, what are we going to do? And you'd all have to vote and talk and everyone, there's nine opinions on it and I'm not telling people what their opinion should be, but it's, it's just a concern of mine. So I was hoping personally that we would do the 2.3 and I'm all in favor of it. I'm all in favor of it and, and moving it forward. But I was really hoping for the 2.3 and then you guys come back, your building committee comes back and says, okay, this is what we did, we did, went through the whole process. We need another authorization for this much money. I don't think, I mean, I think you should be able to do that in a year, right? The 2.3 million, you at least suggested that at our, at our group, that you could do it in a year, correct? So can you tell me why it came to us? To the extent you know, because I know it's the first select woman who puts it on the calendar, maybe, maybe puts it on the agenda. So maybe Jared, you can participate in this conversation. Why is it 22.7? Why am I committing to that today when I really don't know what the end cost is going to be?
I think it comes back to if it's the conversations we're having in the state and if they all of a sudden say, we're going to, we're going to, air conditioning projects are ready for reimbursement, they want to say that we're committed to the full project. And by approving the full project as a whole and knowing that the Board of Ed is committing to this project, we are setting ourselves up for any grant money that the governor now disappropriated yesterday for more than just 2 million. You know, and we're, we're committing to this for a project that's worth 22 million and ready to go. And not just the Board of Ed, but other town bodies. I think it puts us in a better position for, for hopefully accessing some state funding. I hear what you're saying in terms of, you know, what comes next, that these are older buildings and, you know, we're saying three years, but it could be longer. I mean, I was on the Sherman Building Committee, we thought that was going to be done this summer and it took longer. And I, I think that, you know, once they start, they'll know and it may not be, it may not be three schools. If there's a surprise, it may be one school and it may take longer than the three years. And those are decisions that we're going to have to make. In terms of the roofing, they're a priority. I said this in our group that, you know, we're not going to put off a roof, we're not going to put off a boiler, that other decisions are going to need to be made. We, you know, the Board of Ed approved this waterfall. We haven't revisited the waterfall as a full board since we met with our, the capital planning group and got that 2.5 million cap. That's helpful for us to move forward. The facilities committee of the Board of Ed is going to go back to the waterfall with Mr. Papa George. We're going to relook at it from a cash flow perspective more than we did in the past, knowing now what the cap is. You know, I think that will be valuable as we, the group meets again to look at the next four years and prioritize it.
The whole board understands that the numbers presented at our capital planning workshop, if that's what we still called it in January, when you guys just put everything on there, is just un, unworkable, is just unaffordable. Like, there's no possible way we could ever afford that the way it was. So I guess we're, I mean, I know as one member of this body that I'm looking for you to kind of close that gap in the next year to, to, so the next time, I'm not scared when I leave that meeting because I left that meeting scared. Scared that there's things on here, like I have no which, idea which way we're going with, with all of your stuff because no one's really putting a priority. Is, is air conditioning the priority? Is roofs the priority? Is, you know, these buildings your priority? I, I, I left there not knowing for the first time in many years, but pretty much ever, where, where I left there without kind of a plan of where, where we were going.
Would it be okay if I jumped in? I, I agree with you, Mr. Walsh. I, I didn't love the, I mean, I get it, but I didn't love the, the approach in our capital planning overall of having the universe of a wish list because to your point, that's not feasible, right? So, so all that means is that now you got to take that and go through a second step to whittle it down to something reasonable, which is supposed to be the charge of our working group, right? And we're only on year one. So I hear you. And I think you're absolutely right. I think the first, I mean, what was that first, 450 million or something? You know, I think so. And it wasn't just the, the Fairfield Public Schools, it was the town side too. We had every, you know, we kind of had everything under the sun there. So, so I certainly agree with you. It was my recollection and I, I might have even, you know, I think I made the point of this in our working group. You know, if we authorize this, we're not really authorizing the year one cost. We're, we're authorizing this first couple million dollars as, as really phase one of the $22 million project. So let's just be honest that that's what we're stepping up for. You know, we're not spending the 2 million just for the heck of it to find out, you know, more information. And so I really thought we should be going to this eyes wide open that if we, we were authorizing the first couple of years of this cash flow, really what we're doing is we're committing to the 23 million. Now, to Ms. Vitale's point, that might end up spreading out or taking a different form or in the worst case scenario, it gives you two schools versus three. I don't know. But I didn't, you know, I didn't like the idea of just authorizing a part of it because that's not really what we're doing in my view. I think we're really stepping up to the full amount. I also am cognizant, I don't know what this, you know, state funding is going to turn like, turn out to be. It seems like there's so many dollars flowing these days that, who knows if there'll be another allocation? I, I hope we get something. But, um, yeah, I, you know, I, I think that just looking at sort of the phase one, that's the cash flow, that's not the project in my mind. So I, I, I thought it was important for everybody to understand what it, what it is in fact that we're looking at here and that would be the project, which is the 22 million. So that was my perspective. And I, I also, and I think the first select woman acknowledged this, acknowledged this as well, in, in terms of the initial charge of our working group. This is, you, you can't look at a one-year capital plan, like so many of these things are multi-year. So that's going to be deferred till the fall, but that has to happen because it's not just this project, many projects. You know, even that small $450,000 project we, we authorized earlier as a two-year project. So, so I hear you, but that was just my kind of perspective on the meeting and I, I, I thought that we, for many reasons, the 22 million was what we should be all acknowledging we're doing here.
Madam Chair, can I respond, please?
Of course.
So Mr. Walsh had asked about the, you know, the First Select Woman's take on this and I'll say my, my takeaway from that meeting might have been a little bit different. I know the idea of breaking this into pieces was mentioned and brought up, but I didn't get the sense that there was, you know, any finality to it. And I think going into the meeting, it was clear, at least to us, that the, the intention was that there would be a large authorization for the full amount with only a, a small amount being used for cash flow in the first year and that the rest would roll out over the next two years. But that being said, this is clearly a priority to the Board of Education. They are going into this with their eyes wide open and knowing what's, what's ahead, the process that's ahead and the limits that they have to live within. And so if it ends up being the amount that they are, that they're estimating right now are going up, then something, something else is going to have to give. And it, and the, you know, the beauty of this process is that we will continue. I admit that the, doing this on a one-year basis was a little, a little clumsy, but I think going forward, this process is going to be much better. It's going to be, we will be doing a five-year outlook on it and a five-year plan. And I think that's where, that's where you will see the benefit of looking at this within the context of the, the capacity that the, that the town has to bond and that, you know, trying to fit these projects into that capacity. So when we get there in the fall, we'll see this and, and, you know, maybe, maybe by then or, or by the next year, we'll see that it's going to cost $30 million. Okay, that's, that's the priority to the Board of Education and, you know, we'll look at the next five years and, and figure out what other projects, if there are other things that they're able to do.
All right, is this the normal way we do it? We don't put the architect's money first, we do prove the entire amount? Okay. Is Mr. Staffstrom still on the phone, Madam Chairwoman?
Yes, he is.
Excellent, excellent, John. I love making, like, getting information out of you instead of you making money for free. So I'm going to ask you your expertise. The way the bond resolution is written, my question is if, for example, the, if we approved 22.7 million dollars for this and say the basic air conditioner came in, they could do it for $21 million, but they wanted to start spending the rest, the building committee, right? Because the building committee then gets to spend, am I, am I incorrect, the 22.7?
Well, they can only spend it for the projects that are outlined there and the projects are outlined as those three particular schools.
The air conditioning or does it include the, the fire suppression things and stuff you were talking about, Mr. Angeles?
The, the total for the project would include any needed air conditioning modifications, adding, making, so that we're making the air conditioning project work within the building.
So if, wouldn't include fire suppression systems?
If we found that it was needed to, to do one of the buildings, take North Straffield, I know that probably came up, I apologize, North Straffield has a sprinkler system, but only in part of the building. So as we went through that to bring it into the rest of the building, yes, the numbers that we put in there included doing that.
So in some of the schools, it includes not just cooling the school, it includes fire suppression systems?
It does because as you, I'm sure you know by code, when we start putting money into construction projects, we have to bring things up to current code.
Okay. And you concur with this, Mr. Staffstrom, Attorney Staffstrom?
Yes, I think that's part of the entire air conditioning system. Obviously, when you start to put in an air conditioning system, as I understand it, you're going to be tearing parts of the building apart and doing other things. So you've obviously got to then, as was just pointed out, restore the building and bring it up to the, that existing code.
Is it just code stuff or if they were installing, like, say, we get past fire suppression and hey, we have like an extra million dollars left here? Why don't we just do the lighting? Hey, we got to take down the ceiling boards. So that's now kind of, the lights are in the ceiling boards. So are we going to be doing, can they do lighting?
I, I, I think it's beyond my expertise to know what's actually involved in the air conditioning project and what they might need to replace and not need to replace. I, I think that's probably more likely directed to the, actually the project managers.
So as you, as I just heard, it's got to be related. So again, if we're taking down existing to make room for duck work and stuff, we have to rebuild.
To make room for duck work and stuff, we have to rebuild back to the current condition. So then it becomes, I think, a board, uh, building committee decision whether are we going to take down old T twelve bulb light, light fixtures and put. Put them in storage and put them back up or are we going to put in LED lights as we're rebuilding back to current conditions?
Yeah, that's the question I have is what's, how's it written? Is, how, how's that written?
So when we priced this out, we, we did look at the buildings and if it was going to be beneficial. In the process of rebuilding to update something we did such as LED lights in a building. Some of our buildings already have LED lights, so they wouldn't be replaced. We would just reuse existing.
Okay, so it could be more than, it could be more than just cooling systems. Do you have any idea? Take out air conditioning systems, anything to do with cooling the building? What was the extra money for those three buildings that was that you, I mean, putting together your estimate? Have included on other things from anything, lights, some fire suppression, anything else? Do you know how much that was?
Um, I don't have that answer in front of me, but I do know it was included in our report from the engineer, so I can get it to you.
Okay.
And, and this is just the process we've used for every renovation when we're replacing, upgrading HVAC in every building, when we're taking down the, the ceilings. Or you're not putting up old, you're replacing it, getting the most efficient lighting. Um, and fire suppression is just for insurance for protecting the building itself.
Mr. Pop, Mr. Popovich, we're in your building, right? You can go run down to your office and get that number, right? If we took a five-minute bio break, it's, I mean, we've been going since seven thirty. It's now ten forty-five.
Oh, wow. You're, you're a hero, man. I like it. So let's.
Me too.
Can we?
A committee's been here since six.
Wow. Would, how long would that take you to go get that number?
Um, to get the actual reports, not long to actually dig through the report and find the information. I can't put a number on that.
Okay. It's not just one like number in the report for each of the buildings, what the air conditioning?
I have the report right here. So let me see.
Oh, excellent.
Again, I gotta, I gotta see where it is and what the breakdown is and how to pull it out, but.
Um, Madam Chairman, could we take a five-minute break, bio break?
Of course. Uh, so we will reconvene at, um, ten fifty.
Ten fifty. Can I continue with, with, okay, um, okay. I understand you won't get it. You'll get it for us. Um, will you be prepared at all future meetings? Anytime you're talking about air conditioning to give me that number? Cause I'm going to ask you that every, every single time. And if you could also provide us with, with a list like per school. Of all the additional things you're doing that's other than air conditioning, cooling equipment?
I can do that. I will, uh, if it pleases you, I will get you a copy of these reports for these three buildings. Cause in here in the report, it does give a total number and it gives, uh, it goes into detail about dropping the ceiling grid and. The replacement of specific lighting. So it gives me that. Unfortunately, there's another page to this book, which I don't have, which is a. Breakdown of the total number.
All right. Cause obviously if it's like 10% of the money or 15% of the money, it shouldn't just be called an air conditioning. Um, project. It should be called an air conditioning and lighting upgrade and whatever project. I mean, because it's being sold as an air conditioning project. And that's what I think I thought was the situation. I didn't know about what you did in previous, um, projects. And I'm not, so I'm not saying anybody's trying to hide anything, but I'm just telling you when I think that it's air conditioning. I think it's air conditioning. What tipped me off tonight was you saying, well, we're also going to do fire suppression stuff anytime we need to do it. In, in these buildings and you were very honest about that and I appreciate that. But that's what led me to ask you the question, um, about what other things. So I'm like, wait a minute, could it be the lights? Cause you know, I'm known. And I do know that at Sherman, when we went through it, that there was upgrades to that stuff. But we talked about it and it just hadn't been talked about. So I'd appreciate if you'd be prepared. Um, I'm not saying you're not prepared. I'm just saying in the future, based on where I'm telling you I'm going to be going. If you could just be prepared for that. So I'm not wasting your time and everybody else's here's time. So thank you.
Absolutely. And just to clarify. In public record that we have had several conversations in my office internally about. The building committee and that we do need to be able to say that. This project cannot spin out of control. We have to be able to identify what is being done and we need to keep a tight. Control over this project because it can very easily spin out.
And I appreciate that because it's really your money. I mean, so you're getting allotted a certain amount of money, just like the town's getting a lot of the certain amount of money. And any, if it was, I'm just throwing a number out there, round number of them. If it was a million dollars that could have been saved, it could have been a million dollars you could have spent in some other area that would benefit the children. And, you know, you know, I'm not saying that that would happen, but it's just an example of what could happen. Um, all right. So the main reason for the twenty-two million dollars is this state grant that may be available or may be available in the future. Is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay. Um. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Other comments, questions on this item?
I'll just make a comment. I'm not asking questions. So I'm just making a comment.
Please.
Um, I'm not happy with this because I thought it was going to be for two point three million dollars and not. You know, twenty, almost twenty-three million dollars. Um, I'm willing to give this one a chance. So I'm going to go along with it because I want to show that I support the program. But if things go awry here, we're going to have to rethink about the way we do this and we're going to have to talk about it and, and maybe we do. Say later on, because there's other projects, bigger air conditioning projects in these coming. And these numbers could be way off from what you're talking about. And. You might have to make decisions in regards to whether to go forward with that project, not go forward with that project, change what you, your thought is and. It just always worries me when we're authorizing an amount. Then everybody thinks that they have that amount when you, the board might change their mind. We might change our mind, I guess. I, I don't know. So anyway, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. I, I, um, I just want to say I appreciate that comment. I, you know, and not to, this is not meant as a criticism. I, I just. I believe that, that this whole area around capital is one that collectively we could do. You know, a, a much better job, um, in, in terms of our oversight with some better information. So. I would, I would appreciate any feedback that anyone has. I'm sure Jared is, you know, willing to work on it as well because I, I do think we can do better in terms of. Standardizing the information we get, monitoring the projects after they go. And I think that's a really important thing to do because when you do that. Um, and you see that things, you know, right now it's not really. And unless somebody comes back for more money and even, even if somebody needs more money that, you know, and right now we might be able to bake that up with another project that's under in terms of bonding authorization. So we don't really know how to, um, get better unless we see, you know, what. See the results of things that don't work out the way they're supposed to. So I do think that's an important, um. Way to improve our process. So I, I appreciate that. Mr. Tesani?
Yeah, no, thanks, Madam Chair. I just want to kind of dovetail off what you were saying because we, this same subject came up earlier when we were talking about the other bond. Authorizations. Mr. Matola had a great suggestion. Instead of us making a motion, as we discussed earlier in the night. About how to handle the reporting back to us about how these projects are progressing. And the same is true. For this, uh, project in terms of coming back to us to find, to let us know. Where we are in the project, you know, all those things that you outlined. Earlier in the evening and you alluded to a few minutes ago, I think those are all things universal to each. Of these allocations as we, as we've approved them throughout the evening.
Agree. You know, all of this, I think, without a, um, sort of a budget process that's supported by systemic. Something that, you know, that can track the accounting and reporting on these things. It's harder. It just has to be something we, we put some effort in. So thank you. All right. I'm going to, um, if there are no more comments, I'd like to move forward with a vote on this item. Um, so. Uh, let's see, this was item twelve. So can I have a motion, uh, to adopt the bond resolution? Appropriating twenty-two, seven oh one, four forty-three for the costs associated with phase one of the air conditioning upgrade. Project at various schools and authorizing grants to reimburse one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars of such appropriation. And authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation. Mr. Stark, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, all in favor. All right. It is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you for being here. Uh, it was, it was good to have you here in person. So thanks for making the effort and sitting here through the long evening. Really appreciate it.
Well, you needed an audience. You're here. I mean, at least you need to have an in-person audience.
This would have been a tough one. Yeah. You know what? This, this actually would have been a tough one to do over WebEx. So really appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Thank you. So we're, we are going to move on to. Item thirteen to consider and set the mill rate for the fiscal year beginning July one, twenty twenty-two and ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Can I have a motion to put this before us, Mr. DeWitt? Uh, seconded by Mr. Matola. The backup for this item is on the PDF is on page five. So page five twenty-two. So I'm, I'm going to actually, um. Uh, ask, uh, Mr. Schmidt to walk us through this. So. Um, actually, Mr. Schmidt, maybe we can just keep it quick. I think, you know, just why don't you hit the highlights on here? And then you take us to the summary schedule to look at the alternatives, please.
Sure.
Highlights in, I'm sorry, in terms of, uh, changes outside of what we, you know, the, outside of the adopted RTM budget. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah. And, and I will, I'll just speak, uh, a little bit and, uh, one particular portion of it, um, of the changes outside of the, what happened and, um, and what got approved by the RTM. Um, we did, and then probably the, the largest development, which is that, uh, the state budget passed, um. On, uh, the same, passed the house on the same night that, uh, the RTM was voting and then the next night in the Senate. Um, within that budget was an additional one point two million in pilot funding for the state, for the town. Um, and so that is factored into the, into the calculations here. Um, aside from that, I know that Frank is on, and so I'm going to have him, uh, walk you through some of the, uh, the details of it. Frank, are you, uh, there and awake?
Yes. I'm here. How's it going, everybody?
Good. Thanks. Thanks for being here, Frank.
Yeah, no problem. Um, so yeah, so I'll go, um, you know, Jared touched on the. Kind of the revenue piece outside of our, you know, outside of our control and that was about one point, uh, two million. Um. The other piece was the, uh, um, was just some change in assessment. Um, that was a result of BAA adjustments and also certificates of correction. And so if you look at the summary schedule, which was where I think we're going and, and I, and I think the best schedule to look at it is schedule B because that's what everybody's used to looking at. Um, so this kind of goes over the, the changes that we just talked about. Um, you could see grayed out or changes from Board of Finance, um, since you guys had last seen this. Um, and like I said, the, um, the notable change besides the one that Jared had talked about is. Just the BAA adjustments and some certificates come of correction coming a little bit higher. Um, when you guys had last looked at this and approved the budget, it was at fifteen million. Um, when I asked the assessor to run a grand list. Uh, he had told me that it was, that the new number was actually came in a little bit higher at about twenty-two million. Um, so those two changes get you to, um, with the ninety-eight point eight nine, um. Mill rate that was assumed, um, would get you a, a twenty-seven point two four. Um, mill rate and, you know, just for, I'm sure everybody's noticing that the collection rate. For reserve uncollected taxes is shown here at ninety-eight point nine zero. That's just due to rounding, um, the closest you can get with, once, once you round out the mill rate to five decimal places. The closest you can get to ninety-eight point eight nine is actually ninety-eight point eight nine nine. So that's why there's some rounding there. Um, so if everybody's good with that page, I could go to the kind of the scenarios and talk about those briefly.
Thanks, Frank. I just, so just, um, just for the benefit of the public, um. So this, this one point two million, this is extra, uh, state money. That, um, was approved in the state budget that was not in the original assumptions. And so the proposal here. Is to give that money back to the taxpayer by factoring it into the mill rate.
Correct. Into the, into the tax revenue, which reduces the amount that you need to levy. Correct.
Correct, correct. To, to, um, yeah. So we're not going to change. But we don't change the revenue, right? So the, the revenue budget is the budget. This is just to factor that revenue in when, when doing the mill rate. Have that right?
Yes.
Right. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry, Mr. DeWitt.
Yeah, thank you. Um, just wanted, I think there's a correction. Schedule A. At the end. You have required mill rate FY twenty-two and mill rate FY twenty-two. I think you wanted to say required mill rate FY twenty-three, right? That first one should be, yeah, right. So the required mill rate we're recommending here right now is twenty-seven point twenty-four. So just there on. All right. Thanks.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. So Frank, you wanted us to go to schedule D?
Yes. So schedule D, um, just shows, so last year there were. Uh, many scenarios when I had looked back at the meeting, um, I think that was probably because of, you know, still uncertain times. Um, this year I just decided, or we just decided to kind of display three. Um, and they're pretty much in line with the historical, um. On page, on, on schedule E, I'm sorry, so which would be the next page. Um, the only thing that I would note is that the low on the historical, um, is ninety-eight point seven three, kind of similar. Um, to why I had to round, uh, to ninety-eight point nine zero. There's just. When you round, when you officially kind of get the, when you get to the mill rate and, and, and. You, you go out just five decimal places, there's a little bit of delta and that delta. From my understanding has historically just been, you know, a plus or minus in the reserve for uncollected. Um, you know, the plus or minus is like fifty to eighty, you know, eighty thousand dollars, not much. Um, so the current scenario, like I said, is ninety-eight point eight nine nine. Um, and that, and that's rounded to ninety-eight point nine zero. It's a tax rate increase of point nine six percent. And the reserve from collected taxes is three, about three point five million. Um, and in either scenario, you know, you can see if you were to be on a more conservative, uh, collection rate close to the last year, you'd be at a one point one five percent. Increase if you add a more aggressive, um, mill rate. You'd be at about a point eight five percent increase and, and, you know, you can, you can see the changes on each of the columns there.
Okay. I just, I think, um. I, I understand what you mean. I think you might've. I think when you said the more, the lower. One was the more recent. Actually, I think that the high collection rate is the most recent because that would be last year. Um, so, so essentially what you're saying here, you've got three scenarios here. All of these are developed off tax collection rates from the last five years, including the COVID year. Uh, the highest collection rate was twenty twenty-one at ninety-nine oh one. The lowest collection rate. Absent the rounding is twenty seventeen. The current scenario you have here for us is the average of the four years, including the deferment. So that's right down the middle, the ninety-eight point nine. And that's what produces the twenty-seven point two four. Mill rate.
Yeah, but yeah, that's correct. When I said, when I said, I think when I said last year, I'm sorry, I was referring to the ninety-eight point seven. One was about what the collection rate was assumed in, in, in last year's budget. But yeah, everything you just said, correct. Yep.
Gotcha. And that, yeah. So that's, uh, so that ninety-eight point seven one is actually, um. Roughly the low of the last five years as well. Okay. Thank you. All right. Comments, questions from the board on this? These schedules are on this proposal. Uh, Mr. Walsh?
Um, first of all, Madam Chairwoman, um, in regards to schedule D, and I appreciate Frank being honest about why they chose three. The administration chose three numbers. I'd like to go back to the way we've always done it, which was a lot more options. To be able to consider, uh, these, these three are just not enough personally for me. Um, so in future years, it, it wasn't.
So in future years, it wasn't just because of COVID that we, you know, had a lot of options. We had a lot of options. Mary, you've been on the maybe you and Chris have been on probably the longest. It's been going on for 15 or 20 years, right? So I think for this board to have the ability to fully look at it and choose options, which is what we're doing tonight, we should be able to have it. My other concern is, and I'm struggling with it, is you know, we seem to be kind of trying to take an aggressive collection rate. And we were staring at this inflation rate that's out of control right now. And interest rates just went up yesterday by half of a percent. And an economy, we don't know really where it's going. And for us to take in a in in this kind of financial situation for our taxpayers and not knowing what's going on with the economy and whether we're going into a recession or not, just seems like a very aggressive number to take with all of that backdrop. And I mean, I mean, talk about the stock market, which one day skyrockets, and then the next today, you know, the rocket went in the wrong direction, came down to down to earth. So it's just a it's just an odd time, and it's just an odd time to seem to be taking in a an aggressive number with 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 the financial things. And I'm interested to hear. I mean, I know there's other people who have financial backgrounds and on this board, but it's something I'm struggling because if we don't hit that collection rate and because of the economy or other influences, we're basically backstopping that against the fund balance, which we've done in a number of other scenarios during this budget. Where, you know, if, you know, we don't have a contingency anymore. We have zero in contingency. We haven't funded. I know it's the Internal Service Fund, but, you know, get hit with extra amounts for lawsuits that we have to pay out this year, you know, you know, we just don't know what's going to happen. And it just seems like we're using the Internal Service Fund during this budget for our backstop for this budget, you know, that we're just using it, and we don't know what's going to happen. And and I just think that got to at least consider reducing that or throttling that back.
Okay, thank you for your comments, Mr. Walsh. Mr. Curley, you have perspective?
No, actually, I just wanted, if it's okay, I'd like to ask a clarifying question because I I understand the concern, but I'm not sure what you're advocating for, Jim, because
I'm trying to think of it, too. It just seems like an odd year that we'd all be going towards a very aggressive collection rate when everything we're looking at objectively is saying interest rates are going to continue to go up. We don't know what's going on with inflation, but it's completely out of control at 8.4%, at least the last number that I know was out there. And at a certain point, the entire economy could be, you know, I read all sorts of things in the Wall Street Journal, but most of them don't seem to be too positive about where the economy is going and how it's going to affect our taxpayers. Will it lead to layoffs? I don't know. I mean, there are certain industries that can't find any employees, and no one wants to work. And then there's others that could be negatively impacted. So, you know, it's it's it just seems to be an odd time. I'm just trying to have an honest conversation at the table about where, what I guess to hear your thoughts on it, everybody at the table's thoughts on it. Because we all have to make this decision. It just seems like an odd time to be taking an aggressive collection rate. It's not like this stuff's not happening. So.
I I understand a lot of the concerns they have. I have many of the same. But I guess I'm still looking for clarification, though, because I'm I guess I'm trying. I'm not clear what your what perspective you're thinking about this, because, for example, if we're talking about, I'm not sure this is an aggressive collection rate. I think it's in line with the average, but I and and it's lower than where we were last year. But I understand your point. I guess my question is, are you suggesting we go to assume a lower collection rate, which would be more conservative for the town, but that would in turn increase the taxes, the tax burden on the residents, which part of your argument talked about how tough with inflation it is and and how tough it is on our residents. So that seems counter to what you were. I'm trying to understand your argument.
It's kind of my struggle. And that's 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 my struggle. So do we say we're just going to go to 99.1 and just plan on that we're going to be burning fund balance on behalf of the on behalf of the taxpayer to 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 reduce their burden? Because I think in a perfect world, if I wasn't concerned with how what the effect of the economy was going to be on the taxpayer, I'd be saying logically, it doesn't make sense to stay at 99 point, you know, whatever, 98.89. It doesn't make logical sense. But on the other hand, it's a weird year because I'm like, to your point, Mr. Curley, I'm like, but then I'm going to make the taxpayer pay more money. And for some, that's not going to be a problem. But for the people really struggling, yeah, I'm going to increase their taxes, and that's not where I want to be either. So it's it's kind of and if so personally, in my own head, the thing is, I'm making a decision. Okay, do I stick with the 98.89? And I, my logical self is saying, I think we're going to be wrong on that number. So I'm going into fund balance to give relief to the taxpayer. Those are the issues that I'm struggling with. And that's why I I wanted to hear what everybody else had to say to see whether somebody could help clarify these thoughts.
So, Mr. Matola, you have a view here?
I hear what you're saying, but, you know, a couple of years ago, during the height of COVID, we had those concerns and our our residents pay their taxes in good times and bad times. It's it hasn't been a problem for us. We have historically very high tax rates in good times and bad times, the whole time I've been on this board. So I understand what you're saying. But I think we have to keep that.
Yeah.
People pay their taxes.
I I understand that. I will say, John, you know, I've thought about that, like, we were wrong that year. We were we no, we were wrong, but I don't think anybody had any idea the federal government would throw so much money at the problem and do like payroll protection amounts where, you know, the place where I work, people were just leaving in droves because they wanted to get the money for free. That wasn't right either. So, you know, I think there were some special circumstances that no one seemed to really get hurt except the lowest in the economy. I think he did get hurt, but.
So funny that you said that. I was I think on this whole board, I had the most doom and gloom mindset that year. And I wanted to, you know, I I thought we were making a mistake across the board in a number of revenue categories. And and several of you said, no, we're going to get all those building permits. We're going to get those conveyance taxes, and homes are going to sell. And I was thinking, people don't even want to buy a pair of shoes. They're going to buy a house in this COVID. I mean, this was in the the early days. And I was wrong. And and I remember Mr., I think it was Mr. Bremer saying, Fairfielders pay their taxes. What are you talking about? Is we have so much uncertainty here. Why would we think that way? But you're right. So I guess here's my view. I don't think 98.9 is aggressive. I don't think it's conservative. But I I don't think it's particularly aggressive. I I think it's, you know, at the end of the day, we can't and this is just the way my 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 head works is, you know, you can go on intuition, but, you know, we we have the data. This is an average. You could, we could probably think of things in both directions, and and we could be wrong about any of them. And I know I've been wrong about a lot of these revenue estimates in the past. I've been pessimistic. And I've been wrong because we've done much better. So the reality is, we don't know. And so I think it's this is a the middle scenario in my mind is objective. You know, if it's a little high, a little low, it's, you know, we have a basis for it. We're not guessing based on personal concerns or you know, things speculation of things we don't know about. We actually have a basis for choosing it, and that is that it is the average of these these most recent years. And so you know, that that's the way I think, because I'm used to just in my line of work. I always, you know, it was always whenever you made judgments and estimates, they always had to be defended with data and have a basis in it. You know, you couldn't just pick a number for the purpose of picking a number. So for me, I like this number because it is the average. I I think that's a reasonable basis. I think we could all make arguments about how it might be too high or too low, but that's all speculation. So I think about that. I'm not as worried about going into fund balance. I mean, you know, contingency, we might not have zero. I know we we settled a few of our labor contracts, and so we probably have a little bit of upside, you know, that we didn't plan for in next year's contingency, perhaps. You know, a lot of different things can happen. We do have a history of generating a lot of surplus in the town because we, you know, have vacancies and all the normal things that happen. So I'm, I hear you, Jim. I've you know, had that concern before. But as I sit here and look at this, I think, you know, we're not, we're not picking a number based on speculation or guesses. We're picking a number based on an average. It's objective. You know, it's reasonable. You know, yes, interest rates are going up. We're trying to tamp down inflation. The economy's been, you know, running, running hot. So I I am, I like this scenario personally. I'm I'm comfortable with this. I guess that's where I'm coming out on it. So, Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I yeah, I, you know, I agree with what Mr. Matola said, you know, we were two years ago sitting here, and we were literally talking you off the ledge because you were, you were, you know, wow, do you really think the revenue is going to be there? You really think that? And and and, you know, and I wasn't much, I wasn't far, far off from you, right? And yeah, and Fairfielders did step up, right? And 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 they did pay. They did pay their taxes. And it's it's funny, Mr. Curley, when you talk about, you know, taking them, taking the collection rate to a lower number, you're really increasing the taxes, right? But I always looked at it this way, you know, you're increasing the taxes on people who are actually paying the taxes, right? So everyone, you know, so for that X percent, small 0.1% of the people who didn't pay, right? Who cares? They're not paying, right? And all of us who are paying our taxes are are having an increase. So it's, you know, it, I understand the logic behind it. We're just, you know, we're additionally burdened to people who are traditionally paying their taxes anyway, based on the fact that there might be some people that are having trouble and can't pay their taxes. So and and I see Mr. Walsh's point, you know, is this, you know, is this the right time to do it? You know, probably not. But I got to tell you, I I don't know what the right number is, you know, and I don't know if 98.9, I mean, 98.9 frankly, seems as as good as any any number, to be honest with you. And and I'm not a big fan of the five-year averages because across these these five years, a lot of things happened, right? And there's probably a lot more things happening in this this current year coming up, right? So you know, I I don't know what the right answer is. I'm I was debating this in my head, you know, a couple of days ago when I saw the numbers. And, you know, I I think this number is 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 as good as 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 we can get right now. And I'm gonna, I'm gonna rely on Fairfielders to to pay their taxes the way they've done the last five years. So I don't see much, I don't see much reason to change the number. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Mr. Stark?
I don't like five-year averages either. So I I calculated a 10-year average from the period 2005 to 2014, and that is 98.93. It is also worth noting, since that's the the scenario that we're worried about, you know, recession scenario unfolded in that time period, the collection rate was 98.99 in 2008. The year the global financial crisis began, and then the next year, it was 98.81. So even in the worst of all possible years, by the way, a recession started by the housing economy. We we hit this number. So I I think it's actually quite a good number.
Thank you for pulling up that information. Good to know. Other, other comments from the board? All right. So just for is everyone, everyone is, everyone is comfortable with the 1.2, right? Giving that back to the taxpayer. Mr. DeWitt?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yes, I I just wanted to, I want to make a statement before we vote. Once we get through the numbers.
Absolutely. I just, I know we're focusing on the collection rate, but we sort of breeze by that. I I I am absolutely think that's the right thing to do, but I just wanted to give everyone a chance to comment. So any anyone else have comments on this calculation? Okay. Mr. DeWitt?
Thank you. I just wanted to make a statement before we vote on the mill rate. This is my 15th budget. And my first year here, I thought my job was to cut, cut, cut and help out the taxpayers. And I was, I was literally shouldering the whole burden of every taxpayer in town. And you know what? It wasn't. No, that's not what this job is all about, right? And I've learned three things over these 15 years. I I it took me a couple of years to learn them, but three things. Budgets are marathons. They're not sprints. So what we do this year and what we did five years ago is affecting us now. What we're doing this year is going to affect us five years from now. I'm sure our CFO would agree with that. Two, people care most about their services. People love to give the library an extra million dollars until they hear that they're not going to plow the snow or something's not going to happen. They love their services. And the third thing, and this took me a little while, to be perfectly honest with you, but at the end of the budget, the first selectman, first selectwoman has got to run the town. We we have to ensure that we've given he or she the the money to do what we're what she has to do in the next year. So this year, our board voted an unprecedented, in my opinion, $10 million to the Board of Ed. So as I stated during the night of the budget vote, this is a, we're we're setting a precedent and a new baseline. So after tonight, baseline, that number is the baseline. Every year after that, it's going to be affected. And that's kind of gets me back to my my first rule, right? So we'll see how that works out. Second, this board reduced 1.2 million dollars in risk and contingency. And to me, this means that next year, when the first selectwoman decides to add back in that 1.2 million dollars, and and frankly, I'm going to be the first one in line to tell her to do so, it's immediately a budget increase because we've taken it out of the budget. Where that money, where that 1.2 million, if we decide to, she decides to put it back in the budget is going to come from services. We certainly cannot bond it. And after this year, I think it's unrealistic to think that we'll be taking any money out of the Board of Ed to fund 1.2 million dollars on the town side. So that's back to my rule number two. And three, our board voted against changes to the first selectwoman's changes in HR, which she thought she needed, which to me violates my my third thing that I've learned. So fast forward to Monday night. I watched the RTM meeting, and frankly, I was really appalled by the by the tone of that meeting. It was, there was debate, but it was, it was really not good. It was, um, there was debate, but it was, it was really not good. And there was a constant referral to the bipartisan Board of Ed vote as the rationale for not reducing the Board of Ed budget. That it came up like 10 times. I listened to the whole meeting. And that's what really stuck with me was that constant, you know, bipartisan vote, bipartisan vote. In my opinion, that was a little bit of a cop out for, for no one really wanted to do some hard work in looking at the Board of Ed. Because I frankly think there were, there were some, some movement in that budget. There had to be something. So on Monday night, I made myself a promise that in the coming weeks and the coming months and years, when, when people look back on this, that they won't be able to say that I voted to support this budget. So for those reasons, and for the first time ever in 15 years, even though I know the bill rate is just arithmetic, Mr. CFO, I, I will not vote to approve the mill rate this evening. I wanted to share that with our board and I wanted to make sure I said this with the ultimate respect for all my, my board members and all the decisions that were made this year and all the debate we had. And, um, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeWitt. Any other comments on this item? Mr. Walsh?
I, um, I am gonna support the mill rate, um, of the 98.9 because I know I always have Jared to fall back to blame. Only kidding, Jared. Only kidding. But I, 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 I hear, I hear some of the stuff my colleague, friend Chris has to say, and I, I hear it. I'm gonna vote, I voted against the budget, but I will vote for the, for, for the mill rate. I mean, after all we've done and the $10 million we gave to the Board of Ed in an increase, there, but for the grace of God, somehow we've gotten this $1.2 million and some other, other things to keep this budget on under 1%. I, I disagree with my colleague Chris and then that I, I don't believe the administration puts, should put any of those month numbers back in next year. There are cliffs. This is what this board decided to do. And that's what the direction they gave the administration was. So I would expect to see none of those things back in the budget next year. None, zilch, none. Because this board with its current makeup is taking a different direction. And that's the direction it's going to go. And, uh, so, um, and they've given direction to the first selectwoman and, and the administration of what they want done. And, uh, that's where we're gonna go. But I am going to vote for this, the, the mill rate and go with the 98.9%. And I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anyone else? Ms. Leclerc?
I just want to confirm with, um, our CFO that you're in agreement that that's the proper collection rate, 98.9?
The first selectwoman, uh, back, uh, shortly after, she put out her proposal and it was adopted by the Board of Selectmen. It was her recommendation to go to 98.9. And so, uh, it, you know, we believe that it's achievable. I, I'll, I'll throw one thing out there before you vote on this. But the, uh, to, to date, I shouldn't say to date, but, uh, through the end of March, the collections are running higher than, higher than they were last year by about a half a percent. And when, you know, when you look at the, the, uh, history, you, you can see that last year was at just over 99%. And, uh, so, you know, we think it's, it's, it's realistic. It's achievable and, um, that the recent trend at least seems to be, um, showing that it can be done as well. So we're, we remain comfortable with that, with that, uh, that collection rate.
Thank you. And I guess just to follow up with, um, what Mr. Walsh and Mr. DeWitt, um, said, I guess, no, I, I wasn't ecstatic with how the budget ended up this year. But I mean, the board discussed it and voted on it. And, you know, I, I, I accept it for what it is. And, um, that's why, like, you know, I'll support our, our mill rate.
Thank you, Ms. Leclerc. Anyone else? Okay. Well, uh, before we vote, I just want to thank, um, thank you all for your comments. And, uh, you know, Mr. DeWitt in particular, I, um, we disagree on some of the pieces of this, but you have always been, um, you know, a straight shooter. Like I, I, I always appreciate the perspective that you bring. And, uh, thank you for, for all of it. We can still disagree and still. And unfortunately, the, it's Cinco de Mayo and the bars are closed. Otherwise we'd go, we'd go have a margarita after this, but you know, didn't work out. And, and Mr. Walsh as well, appreciate it. I, I do, you know, I just, I don't want to, everybody's probably about to kill me here. So I'm not going to go into a sermon. But, um, you know, I do just want to say, I, I, I don't think, um, you know, this year's budget, the actions we took, um, they're not in my mind indicative of policy. I think they were very specific factors and pieces of data we looked at. And I really want our board, particularly the Fund Balance Committee, I want, I hope that you will convene soon, start to look at some of these issues. I think we can do a lot of good things. I'm so glad we're back in person. It makes a difference. And, um, I really hope that we continue to all work together for the betterment of our town, which I know is why we're all here. Because why else would we be here at 11:40, uh, in the evening? So, uh, I'm going to move this to vote, if that's okay. All right. So, uh, let me think about this. All right. So I guess I will, um, where's my sheet here? Uh, I will make a, um, a motion, I guess, to set the mill rate at 27.24 for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2023. Do I have a second? Mr. Testane? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay, the motion passes eight, one with Mr., um, uh, DeWitt. Move on to item 14 for something really exciting. To hear, consider and act upon a recommendation from the Board of Finance Audit Subcommittee to accept the bid and reappointment of independent auditors for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. And our audit subcommittee chairwoman, Ms. Leclerc, will take us through that. Ms. Leclerc?
Okay, I'll try to do this very briefly because the audit committee's been here since six o'clock. And it's been a long time. So we voted to support the re, reappointment of our current auditors, PKF O'Connor Davies and, um, partner in charge is Joe Centefani, who we're all familiar with. And, um, we put the, the contract was up this year. We put it out to bid. Unfortunately, we only had one bidder. And, well, or fortunately, um, our current order has been on the contract. Some towns weren't as fortunate as us. And, um, the, there is a increase in, in our audit fee. It, it's actually a slight decline, I think, for the first year, but it's more than what's in our budget by, I think, um, we decided it was 11,000 more, um, which we can find that. The, there's a little bit of a difference, so it's a little bit hard to compare because the Park and Authority is now included in our budget. And the last time it went out to bid, it wasn't. So those were always billed separately. And then there's a separate little fee that gets billed to the Board of Ed for a report. So the current bid for this year coming up for 2022 is 125,096 is the total amount. Last year it was, I bet my glasses to read it correctly. It was 125,040. So is there any question? Anything the other audit committee members want to add?
Mr. Walsh?
Personally, that Mr. Centefani's firm bid on us because I understand other towns did not get any bids on their stuff. It's not a really profitable area. I mean, it's a lot of, so, I mean, we're lucky to have a good firm. I think we get quality work out of Mr. Centefani and his firm. And, um, I'd hate to be in the position where we didn't have an auditor who didn't want to bid on it. So, um, clearly they, I, you know, um, the landscape has changed to some degree. And it's just, uh, it's hard to keep accountants. It's hard to keep quality accountants there, you know? And so, you know, I think we should be fortunate. Thank you.
No, we are. So I, I didn't mean that, that I, I wasn't happy. I, I, I am happy. I'm very happy that they, they were reappointing our current auditors. I just had expected more, more firms to bid. And, um, and that was what Gerald Foley, our purchasing director, said when he interviewed other firms. There's labor shortages that they had, other audit firms are having trouble just building their current audit teams. And also the timing of our audits that, um, that it's very hard at this point in time to do all this startup, um, earlier work. So the next time we go out to bid, we probably want to start the process earlier in the year.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Leclerc. This, this is a situation that happens every, every once in a while. I, it, it was the same thing back when Sarbanes-Oxley happened. The firms just got so much work all at once that people stopped going out and trying to get new business. You know, they just couldn't, they could, you know, barely service the clients they had. They had, you know, more work with existing clients, transactions and deals and everything else. And so, um, and, you know, the employees were in demand. So, you know, um, that's what happened. So we may be in a different situation a couple of years. I mean, I think we've gotten good service from PKF O'Connor Davies, but obviously we wanted to have several proposals in front of us just to know. And, you know, know, know what we didn't know, but that, that didn't happen. So I'm, I'm glad to be able to move forward. So does anyone else have comments? Or do you want to move to vote on this? All right. So I will, I'll, I'll make the motion to, um, approve the appointment of, uh, PKF O'Connor Davies as our independent auditors for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. Do I have a second? Ms. Marman, all in favor? Aye, it is unanimous. All right. So we will move on to item 15. To hear, consider and act upon the draft minutes of March 31, 2022 and April 5th, 2022. Can I have a motion to put this before us? Ms. Marman, seconded by Mr. DeWitt. Comments or questions on the minutes? Anyone? Okay. All right. Oh, so you were, you were abstinent, so you, okay. So we'll take a vote separately then. Okay. So, um, so I'll make a motion then to approve the draft minutes or to prove the minutes of March 31st, 2022. Second, Ms. Marman, all in favor? Jack, no? No, you weren't here? You were here, okay. Oh, okay. Oh, you're voting out, okay. So, Ms., uh, Mr. Walsh, are you? Yes, okay. So Mr. Walsh, Ms. Leclerc, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Marman, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, nay. Mr. Testane? Okay, abstentions? No. Okay, so that, those minutes are approved, eight, one. Okay, and so let's, um, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 5th, uh, 2022, the draft minutes we have before us. Second, Mr. DeWitt. Comments? None? No, we said none. All right, so all in favor? Mr. Walsh, Mr. Testane, Mr. DeWitt, Ms. Marman, Mr. Stark, Mr. Curly, Ms. Charlton, Mr. Matola, nay. Abstentions? Okay, Ms. Leclerc. So those minutes are approved, uh, eight, zero, one. Okay, to hear, moving on to item 16. To hear, consider and act upon any communication. Anyone? Mr.?
Yes.
Yes.
30 seconds, please.
Please.
I, unfortunately, none of them are here to hear this, but I want to put it on record and thank my department. In particular Frank, I don't see Frank on there. I'm really upset that he's not there to, uh, for me to embarrass him. But, uh, he's been an, uh, an incredible addition to the team. As I think, you know, you guys have experienced a little bit of it. He's great in the office, great personality. Caitlin's, uh, you know, fantastic. Connie, we heard from earlier and she's always, uh, on the spot. Every, everybody else in the, in the department is, is, uh, I, I love it. I, uh, they're, they're, they're a great staff. So, uh, I just wanted to, uh, put that on the record tonight, the culmination of the, of the budget process. So thanks for the time.
Yes, thank you all. Please extend our thanks to, uh, to, to the whole team. Yeah, and I, I think I conveyed that before. Frank did not miss a beat.
Great team, it's always a good reflection of a great leader, Jared. So, it's a very great job. Thank you.
Good job.
Okay.
It only starts in six more months.
What? I missed that.
You gotta start in a couple of weeks, I think, isn't it?
All right. Moving on to item 17. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Ms. Marman, seconded by Mr. DeWitt, all in favor? Aye, it is, we are adjourned. Thank you.